Good evening. This meeting will come to order. This is the October 2015 Zoning Board of Appeals. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Ferrante has advised that she will not be able to attend tonight. Mr. Cizola?
Here.
Mr. Haberman?
Here.
Mr. Sota?
Here.
Mr. Vazino?
Here.
Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Ms. Eggleson?
Here.
Mr. Thomas is not here. Thank you.
Also present is Stephen Harris, our zoning officer; Meg Green, our recording secretary; Mr. Dubois. Ms. Ferrante is not here this evening, so you'll fill in for her. If anyone feels that there's a member on this board that might be a conflict of interest to their application, please let us know. Otherwise, we'll begin.
Item number 112 Francis Street, R. 7.5, Kevin Kersedon, Esquire Attorney for Antoinette Voll, owner, Section 9-2-1, appealed the decision. The zoning enforcement officer dated 24 August 2015, map 6, block 84, parcel 2.
Yes, please read the letter from Mr. Kersedon.
The letter reads, dated October 12, 2015, "Dear Mr. Cizola, we respectfully request that our appeal on the agenda for this evening be continued to November 10, 2015, meeting. In order to satisfy the statutory time requirements, we further request that the hearing be opened at the October 13 meeting and remain open until the November meeting. The extension is necessary to give the parties time to discuss and attempt to resolve the issues in full. Please contact me with any questions or concerns. Thank you. Kevin J. Kersedon."
We need a motion to table this till next month?
I make a motion to keep the hearing open until next meeting in November.
Mr. Chairman, should actually open the hearing first and then keep it open till next month?
You have to...
Say motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to open the hearing and keep it open until next, until November hearing.
Second. We have a motion to keep this open, and second on motion, all in favor, Mr. Dubois? With the motion. Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota? Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion.
With the motion.
Okay, it's tabled till next month.
My apologies. I'm going to request that we have a brief recess. There was some material that I neglected to hand out, so I need to hand it out.
Number two.
Item number 2, 79 Brooklawn Drive, R. 18, Alan F. Peck, agent for Alan Moody, owner, Section 3-1-4-1, very rear yard setback to 17 feet where 30 feet required to build two-story addition to add living space and a one-bay garage for a single-family home, map 101, block 809, parcel 89.
Hi, my name's Alan. I've owned the property there...
Alan, we, Alan, sorry, we need your last name and your address, please.
Okay. Alan Moody, 79 Brooklawn Drive, Milford, Connecticut. I've lived in this house here since 1988, and it's been adequate up to that point, but my family is growing again, and presently it has three bedrooms, and one of those I was using for an office, but that's changed, and I need, you know, additional space in the home. So what I'm asking for is the setback. I have a wooded area and then 95 behind my house, so there's, you know, it's, there's no houses there. It's just a forest. That property is the Avalon property, but it's the very extreme end. So what I need is, I want to expand my house from the garage back 30 feet, and actually the, I'm sorry, the living space will be like on a second level. We're going to take the roof off the garage and extend from the garage back. So that will give us the space that we need for the additional people in the house. There's also a storage problem that I have right now. I've had to, because of, you know, my son coming home and, you know, his furnishings and things, I'm using an Eagle trailer to store things, so I need additional storage space. So that's why this was a good plan, to have the living space on one level above and then the storage space below. But that requires the, you know, the setback in order to fulfill, you know, our variance in the setback in order to do this. I don't know if I explained that right.
No, you did, you did. We have, we have your plans in front of us here, so...
I'm sorry.
You explained it fine. We have your plans in front of us, and we've been following, following you, so...
Okay.
Anything else you have to say right now?
No, I just, you know, that's, it's, it's become an issue because our family is growing now, you know, for reasons that we didn't expect, but we need that space.
Okay, so I have a question for you. So the only variance you have is you're looking for 17 feet to the back. Is this a new garage that you're adding on there?
It'll be in addition to the existing garage, yes.
So your existing garage, is that a one-car garage or a two-car garage?
That's a two-car garage.
Okay, so this would be the third garage, so I mean...
Well, there'll be one door for the new addition, so it'll be, you know, basically storage space, and we can, I could put a car in there, but I'm, my intention is to use that space, you know.
Well, it's a large piece of property, and this is your only variance to the rear, so we need a hardship. And why, again, you're asking for this variance?
I have two sons, and I have two grandchildren, so the existing house, you know, we're on top of each other, so I need the, to put this addition on to facilitate, you know, a better living condition. You know, I don't, that is a hardship.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this gentleman? Mr. Sota?
Your current house is one-story, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you're going to raise the roof on the garage and put a two-story addition?
Well, basically, what's going to happen is we'll, we'll take the roof off the garage, and then the new addition will extend from there back.
So where's the living sp, see, we don't have any floor plans. All we have is a square on a site plan.
So it'd be the equivalent of putting...
We gotta, we gotta pick that microphone up again, please. I'm sorry.
Where's the living space going to be on the second floor?
So the living space is, is the second floor, which is above the garages.
Of the garage? And the addition's one-story or two-story?
Well, it's one story of living space, and then...
Right, but it, so it's a garage with living space above it? That's what you're adding on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And how are you getting access from the house to the living space? Is this going to be like a separate entrance, or is it going to be attached to the living space of the house?
No, there'll be an, then outside and...
So a separate entrance, it's not connected to your house at all? Like an accessory apartment, or? How are they going to access your kitchen?
Well, there's a back door.
So they have to go outside to come into the kitchen?
There, there's a back door for the garage. There'll be a staircase going up. So they'll, in effect, have a staircase or stairwell built so that they can access that way and go to the, you know, upper addition. And that will be separate from, you know, my, it's only a staircase there.
I mean, did you think about putting a living space on the left side of the house where you don't need a variance?
No, it didn't seem like it'd be enough. You know, on the other side, I have a deck. I didn't want to take that down.
No, I'm talking, just line it up in the, with the house.
Mr. Haberman, did you have a question?
Mr. Vazino?
Hi. Okay. Question for you. So what are the dimensions of the one-bay garage and the living space above it? How big is that area? I don't see it listed on here.
It's, it's, it's the, from the end of the garage that exists now, we're going to go out 30 feet.
Okay, so the length is 30 feet, and what's the width?
The same width as the garage.
So it's a full square? It's a 30 by 30?
Yeah.
Is that what you're, that's what you're saying? Okay. So your existing garage, which is already built, which is a two-car garage?
Yes.
What's the dimensions of that?
20, 24 by 30, I believe. Yeah, because there's the width of it.
Do you need all of that space? I guess that's my question. You're asking to encroach on the setback, requesting a variance for 13 feet. You're building a 30 by 30 room on the back, which your garage, your existing garage, is smaller than that already. So to me, this looks excessive, to be honest with you, from my standpoint on the board. So help me explain, help me explain why it needs to be that big. Why can't you make it smaller, still accommodate what you need, and stay within the setbacks?
Well, what I'm trying to do is, on the second level, there'll be two bedrooms, one for each of my grandchildren, okay? I have two grandchildren. And then my son will have a room, so he'll, he'll be there. There's a space for, like, a little kitchenette up there, and there's, there'll be a space, you know, a hallway, and then there's also like a little, like a sitting room, and the pitch of the roof will change so that there'll be a window, you know, where the existing, the front of the garage is, there'll be a window, so it'll be like a room. So it's kind of like its own apartment. Just trying to, it's hard to explain, but we laid it out so that, you know, the kids would be with their dad, and we would, you know, still be separate, you know, as, I don't know, you know, the, the apartment that he will have will facilitate his two kids with him and, you know, what they need. There'll be a little shower up there and everything else. So, you know, I'll be on, in the, in the main house. That's what I'm, I'm trying to do.
Okay, thank, thank you. Mr. Sota, you had a question?
So you don't have any floor plans? You don't have any elevation, so we could see what this looks like? I mean, all we're looking at is a square box on this site plan.
Yes, Mr. Harris?
It sounds like the applicant would like an accessory apartment for his family. If that's the case, I will be happy to meet with you in my office tomorrow or any other day at your convenience, and we can talk about the particulars of how you go about creating an accessory apartment.
All right. Take that advice. Well, this is what was, well, see, the minute you told us...
Just to be on the record, I think it's a good idea to take that approach.
The accessory apartment would be an administrative approval in the office. It wouldn't, it wouldn't involve any review by this board.
Unless it needed a variance.
No, he wouldn't need a variance. So if that's what you want to do, sir, if you want to create an accessory apartment for your family, you can withdraw your application to this board and set up a time to meet with me, and we can go over the process of creating an accessory apartment for you. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, the same way you're saying them, that would make things simpler for you.
So would you like to withdraw this application? Would you like to withdraw this application, this variance?
No, you wouldn't have to come back for a variance for an accessory apartment.
That's an administrative approval.
Okay. Well... Stephen, what if it needed a variance for the setback, though? He would still have to come before us, correct?
If he wants this, this particular layout...
But isn't there, isn't there a limit on the size of it?
If he wants this particular layout, yes, but there's...
But isn't there a square foot requirement on, maximum on the apartment?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a laundry list of things, but I think that without too much thought, fitting an accessory apartment into the existing parameters of the setbacks is easy.
Okay.
All right, you understand what he's saying? So if you want to go back to the microphone, withdraw your application. He's willing to, you can go in and talk to him about an accessory apartment. If that's, in fact, is what you're looking to do, okay? So to end this, to end this hearing, we need you to withdraw.
Okay, this, I guess I will, okay, I will withdraw this request for the variance and speak to the zoning officer about the arrangements with the apartment, or to set it up as an apartment, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, this, this application has been withdrawn, so this, this hearing is closed.
Item number 3, 108 Beach Avenue, Zone R. 7.5, Charles Willinger, Esquire Attorney for Leiden Consulting Corp., owner, Section 9-2-1, appeal, the decision of the zoning enforcement officer dated 3 September 2015, map 60, block 743, parcel 2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission and staff, good evening. Let me raise this a little bit. My name is Charles Willinger. I'm an attorney and partner in the law firm of Willinger, Willinger &amp; Bucy, and we represent the petitioner, Leiden Consulting Corporation, as the owner of parcel 2, 108 Beach Avenue. Now, Mr. Chairman, I understand from the agenda that there are two separate items. Three is our appeal of the ZEO's decision, and four is our variances. Some or all would be needed, depending on how you rule on, on item number three. And what I think I'd like to request, so that we don't keep getting up and down, as I know a number of people that want to speak, hopefully all of them in favor, maybe not, but what I would like to request is that I, you allow me to make one presentation that we'll use on both 3 and 4, and then perhaps you'd consider the public, and then, of course, when you vote, you'd have to differentiate between the two petitions. I don't want to just have to get up here and repeat and give new exhibits on either one, since they're the both, both of the same subject matter. Would that work for you, Mr. Chairman? This way, we can have one transcript and the record will be complete.
Mr. Chairman? I don't, I don't know how long your, your presentation is. It's Mr. Harris.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as the board votes on the appeal first, because that's required by law.
Yeah, oh, that would be, yeah, that's understood. You'd have to vote on the number 3 first to see if and what variances we need on number 4. That's, that's understood.
That's what I was going to say to you.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you. I think that'll make the evening flow a little bit better. The, I do have the mailings that, who would you like me to submit that proof of mailings And those are the mailings that we sent to property owners within 200 feet of the subject The property in question is depicted on the site plan. You all have a copy of the site plan. Parcel 1 is owned by my clients, the Miseri family, and it's actually a family trust. That's not included in this particular application. Parcel 1 is the residence. Parcel 2, the waterside parcel, is the subject matter of both items number 3 and 4 on your agenda, and that is...
Mr. Willinger, hold on one minute, please. Are we supposed to have any, anything that's going along with what he has? Do you have anything?
No.
No. We don't have what you have in your hand there right now, so...
You don't have this map?
No, we don't.
We submitted two copies of the big map?
Hold on, hold on.
We have it in the file, Mr. Willinger.
You'll see in the variance... It's only one, thank, thank you. In our variance application, you'll have the copies. What we did is submit a large one and a number of small ones.
I see what you have on that, your, on your main board, your presentation board. Can you just bring that forward to make sure we have the same copy here?
All right, and if it's of use, we'll leave this here during your deliberation, if you'd like. So we're talking about parcel 2, owned by the Miseri Family Corporation, Leiden, who's the, and that's the official petitioner. I'd like to point out that my clients, both the Miseri family and their entity, have owned the, this property, parcel 1 and parcel 2, for about 40 years, so they're certainly not new to Woodmont or to the city of Milford. And the genesis of this appeal is that we approached the zoning office and said that we'd like to install a three-foot-high fence at this, and it's noted on your map in red, and this portion of parcel 2 adjacent to Beach Avenue, three feet in, in height, and decorative only, non-intrusive. We have a picture of which I'll submit in a moment. And we wanted a number of no trespassing signs. You'll also see that, what that looks like, very small in scale. It's on the map. They're 12 inches by 14 inches and mounted, will either be 12 inches in height or 24, depending if it's concrete or vinyl, depending on field conditions. So there'll be no trespassing signs and fencing. Our position was that for the fence and for, and for one sign, we can install that as a matter of right. And the administration, well, Mr. Harris, in his capacity of zoning enforcement officer, issued a letter dated September 3, which I assume you have in your file, and it, and he said, and I'll just paraphrase, that the survey and, and site plan, by the way, that we submitted, which is this plan that you have before you, dated July 21, 15, was reviewed by him, and he's determined that a variance is required to install a fence, and he cites a section of the regulations and multiple signs per section 5341. We have no quarrel with the fact that you need a variance for more than one sign, but we do quarrel with the, with the fence. We don't believe we need any approval for the fence. We do need variance approvals for the signage. So that's the genesis of how we got where we are tonight. Now, what I'd like to do is submit a booklet, if you may. This, this booklet that I'm handing out and making an exhibit in this action was put together by my law firm back in March, when we approached the village of Woodmont for their support and the administration and the zoning officials... their support and the administration and the zoning officials and others. And I think it'd be helpful if I just kind of walk you through this. It'll take a, a lot less time, if I could do that. It starts on page two introduction, saying that we represent the Maseri family and their entity. They've been here about 40 years in Milford and in Woodmont on this property. The property consists of two parcels, and the parcel was created, parcel one and two were created by, if you take a look at Tab A, by action of the city, when in Tab A, October 12 of 1896, the city accepted Beach Avenue as a city road. Now, Exhibit Tab A is a copy of the city records for dedicated and accepted streets and highways, and it's kept in the engineering office. So, basically, the street was created and bifurcated the property, and the property for the last, I don't know how many years, maybe 80 years, maybe 100 years, has been conveyed in two parcels that were created by this instrument. What this did was result in Parcel two being a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. But that's important, because Connecticut zoning law affords great protection to pre-existing lots. The, page three is the crux of the, well, one of the issues that we face, and that is, there's an executive order that was issued by the Office of the Mayor and the Milford Health Department, which requires property owners, and that is owners owning property abutting Long Island Sound, to keep their property in a clean and safe, clean and safe fashion. And Tab C, I'm not going to read it here, is just a copy of those, that administrative directive. That's in Tab C for your convenience. But on page three, you'll note that the issue is, it's becoming increasingly more difficult for my clients to comply with that regulation, because they're unable to keep the general public off of Parcel two. To illustrate the issue that we have with trespassers, I call it the invasion, I'd like to walk you through the Tab D, because if pictures speak 1,000 words, there's more than 1,000 words that we're going to look at now. The first, and I've numbered on the lower right-hand corner for reference, the various photos. The first photo, and you recognize the property, actually, the tree in the far corner, I don't know what kind of tree, is that a cedar tree? I really don't know. Whatever the tree is, it's kind of a landmark. It's wind-blown, and it's kind of, it's just a well-known landmark in, in Woodmont. And you see the property, or portion at least of Parcel two, well-maintained by my clients as much as they can, and you're going to see, you see a tent in the middle. And what happens is that there are various members of the general public that literally pitch a tent. Some members, this happened just not too long ago, a family came, pitched a tent, late at, late at night, late in the afternoon, I'm sorry, stayed there all night with two young kids, they had their children sleep in the tent, they fished all night. By the way, they have miners' hats with the floodlights that flood all over when they, when they move their heads. And then they left, and they decamped in the morning. But that happens more than, than you would think would happen. That's, that's, that's a picture of the tent. Page two is another picture of the tent, but it also shows the topography, the tough topography, the rock outcroppings, and a rather dangerous cliff, if you will, on the level portion of the property towards the sea. Item photo three is an interesting photo. It's a fisherman who's seen fit to take off all of his clothes, except for his underwear, and this is what we're looking at, and what the other children and people walking in the neighborhood look at, is this guy fishing in his underwear. That's item, that's Pages three and four. Page five is the typical shot of the invasion. You could see early in the morning how people start coming onto the site. You could see on page six, they bring in, I, I'm sorry, photo six, they bring on their fishing apparel, their, their coolers, their backpacks. Seven shows more of the same. You'll notice little children also accompanying the adults. Number eight is taken a little higher, on the top of the Maseri home across the street, and you'll see some dogs. That's a problem, too. People come on the property with their dogs, the dogs deposit their goodies, which we have to often clean, so we have the dogs going on the property. Number nine, you'll see, besides the dog, a little, young, looks like a boy from here, a young lad on the edge of the rocks, looking down in the water. I would say that's a very precarious situation. Number 10 is, in addition, and you'll see a number of these pictures, in addition to the fishing poles, the fishermen like to bring liquid beverages, and not, not necessarily soda, onto the site. Eleven shows some of them bunding down, getting their coolers and six-packs ready to go fishing. Number 12 shows a gentleman, and by the way, the great majority of these people, the great majority, are not our neighbors from Woodmont that are coming onto the site. Number 12 shows a gentleman that either was tired of fishing or had too much of that liquid entered, beverage, and he's taking a nap while his buddy is sitting up and doing something, I don't know why. Thirteen shows some of the trash. Fourteen, you'll see more, not now, it's not beer, but there's actual liquor, and this is a typical. Fifteen, even when it's not liquor, you'll see water bottles in, on the property. Sixteen, somebody didn't like his turkey and cheese sandwich, left it there. Seventeen is a good one. Number seventeen is a picture of the Domino's Pizza. What happens is that these fishermen and others that are sitting on our property call Domino's, because they want to have lunch catered in. So, Domino's comes in, the gentleman from Domino's gets out of his car with the order. Eighteen shows the fisherman coming up to get his order. Nineteen, he's paying, I guess, a credit card, he's paying for his food. Twenty, he starts walking away on our property with his Domino's Pizza and his what-have-you, his other package of goodies. Twenty-one is the same. And by the way, we've on several occasions had to clean up Domino Pizza's boxes, in addition to the other stuff. Twenty-two is maybe a worker, it looks like he was a worker, or maybe he's going fishing, he doesn't have a fishing pole, but he does have a case of beer. And what happens on page 23 is it ends up, more often than not, on, on the, on our property. Twenty-four, and this was in August of 14, you, is a picture of the tree, and you'll notice that there's a barbecue grill. Now, in addition to tenting and camping overnight, they're cooking their barbecue on our, on our property. Twenty-five is, you'll notice a driveway. Well, that happens to be the Maseri family driveway. People pull into that little driveway, unload, and then go across and park somewhere. There's a second driveway on the Maseri, on the other side of the Maseri residence, across this, around the curve from this picture, and we've had incidents where people park, actually leave their car on our driveway, and we have to deal with that. Twenty-six is some of the activities later at night, because this is not just during the day. This is late at night, and in fact, this year, we've had more nighttime activity than in prior years, and it keeps getting worse and worse every year. So, this, at 8:30, you'll see a gang of people unloading from their trucks. Twenty-seven are more visitors. You could see the topography and the drop-off on 28. 29 are little children, again, on the rocks, as are 30. Now, on 31, we're getting late into the evening, although it's lighter here, because it's, it would happen to be in July, but it's still getting late. The next picture, 32, is still late. You could see now they're bringing their little dogs in addition to their selves. And then, the last photo on this exhibit is late into the night, it's nine o'clock, and you see people, and this is when it gets darker out in August, and of 14, this picture was taken, and it happens quite a bit where the people come out late at night. Now, do we have the newer photos? At least you think that this, these pictures are a year old. They're only a year old, because we made this pamphlet up in February and March, so we didn't have the summer, but I asked the client to get more recent pictures, and I have here- And you could see in these photographs, now, we're talking about August 22 of 15, just like the other photographs, all the fishermen, the invasion continues. The first three photographs, and then the rest are shots of the various trash, not only beer and liquor, but even their coffee containers they leave out. And you'll see the other graffiti, one of these photographs, I didn't number them, have graffiti right on the rocks. You'll see beer cans and other debris. And then, in the penultimate picture, you'll see a garbage bag, a black garbage bag, which, on a weekly basis, we have to fill every Sunday night. My client goes out and cleans the property as best he can. And then the last picture just shows more of the same. And so, imagine, ladies and gentlemen of this commission, how you would feel if this was your property. You're looking, you want to enjoy your property, it's summertime particularly, although not necessarily just summertime, and I, I would suspect that you would be as outraged and frustrated as my clients are. So, it's a real, it's a real problem that we have to, that my clients have to contend with, and literally on a daily basis, during the high season, which is really before Memorial Day and long after Labor Day, especially with the weather like we've been having in October, we've, every weekend, it's been packed. And it doesn't affect just us. This is not an issue for Parcel two or Parcel one, it affects all of our neighbors. Now, I'd like to bring it back to page five of my handout for a moment, and what, what do we do about it now? Well, we have approached on numerous occasions the people that are trespassing, and asked them in a very nice way to leave, explain that it's private property. They laugh at us, they belittle us, they ignore us. Worse, they threaten us, they use foul language, and it does absolutely no good. We've had the borough police officer come and try to assist, and it's just, it's to no avail. It's just the people totally ignore us. But more, really more important than the insults that we get, and how they ruin our, our summer use of our property, is that this type of conduct subjects my client to liability, liability due to the careless and often dangerous activity that these individuals conduct on this property, and not only the adults, obviously the children have issues, but it's the adults as well. And it's, to give you an example of what we're talking about when we say dangerous activity, Tab E, if you refer to Tab E for a minute, you're not going to believe it, but this is what happens, it happens a lot in the summer, but this happens to be December 14, in the winter, in the middle of the winter, we have two knuckleheads on bicycles on the rocks. That's Tab E. You see, there's two pictures. The second picture shows the bicycle, you know, on a precarious angle as he tries to negotiate through the rocks. So, what's going to happen one day, because this is an accident waiting to happen, somebody's going to get seriously hurt, whether it's a child, or a biker, or a parent, and it's pretty easy to envision, it's going to happen, and it's going to subject my clients to litigation in a lawsuit, and I could, as an attorney, I can very easily see where they would sue, and that individual that got hurt could even sue the city, claiming that they had no idea it was private property, claiming that the city never warned anyone it was private property, and now you have that liability not only affecting my client, but affecting your entire city. And as taxpayers, we all would bear that issue. On page six of the handout, I note on the bottom that what we want to do is install a fence, which is on Tab F. Tab F is an illustration of, oh, actually, Tab F is of the sign. This is the type of sign, 12 inches by 14 inches, little nautical theme, and all it says is "Private property, no trespassing," and, and in the locations cited on the site plan. And on Tab G is a copy, is a rendering, so to speak, of our fence. It's decorative, it's, you could see right through it, it's going to be roped. There's another picture where it shows the type of nautical roping. It's attractive, and it won't, it won't bother anyone, but it will alert the public that, hey, this is demarcation between the roadway and private property. So, that's a fence that we would like to install, and it's our contention that by installing a fence in these signs, you're going to eliminate not only my client's liability, but the city's liability, as I said before. Page eight discusses a land use principle known as the doctrine of fundamental fairness. And on the bottom of page eight is a description of what that is. Basically, it's this. As a property owner, if I own property similar to my neighbors or others in town, and if the other people have been allowed to do something out of fundamental fairness, I ought to be able to do that, too. And this case, there was a Vichy case, a 2011 case out of Stonington, which is the bottom paragraph, but what it says in that case, the facts are a little different, but it makes no difference, it's the principle that we're after. In that case, there were three homeowners who were all granted zoning permits. They were given an as-of-right permit to build a house, and they built a house, and then, despite zoning regulations to the contrary, which we don't have, in this case, the zoning regs are clear. But then the fourth owner of the same subdivision went to get his zoning permit, the board said, no, this, they pointed out this regulation, and they wouldn't let him get the permit. And the courts held that the plaintiffs should be accorded equal treatment, and they granted a requested zoning permit that was issued by the court, based on this theory of fundamental fairness. Now, the point of all this is that what we're asking for, for my clients, is nothing unusual, it's not special treatment, but it's to be treated like our other town waterfront properties. And in particular, I'm talking about the waterside properties on Trumbull Avenue in Fort Trumbull, and on Gulf Beach, on Gulf Street, the Gulf Beach area on Gulf Street. I'd like you, if you would, to take a look at Tab I. Tab I is a picture of what's installed today. It's up there, it's been recently replaced, no zoning approvals were ever taken, and it's fencing. Now, that fence that you see, this is on the corner of Elm Street and Trumbull Avenue, is higher. That's, I think, about a five-foot fence, and that was installed. Same thing, across the street is the individual's homes, and then on the waterside, they have a little bit of property, they want fencing. Then the next page shows the interior shot of the fence, a little bit of land, looks very similar to ours, and the- very similar to ours, and the, some rock ledge, and some steps, we don't have the steps leading down to the water. The next picture shows a different type of fence, because every owner has a different type of fence, none of them needed any variances for it. And then the last, the last few pictures show the type of nautical, this is the type of fence that we would like to install, a little smaller, a little smaller in height, ours is only three feet, but it's the posts and the nautical ropes, and you'll see a couple pictures of that. And then, lastly, in that exhibit, you'll see a sign of private property, and another sign, danger, keep off the rocks, no trespassing. So it's been done in Fort Trumbull. If you take a look at J, not to belabor the point, but we have the addresses on Gulf Street, across the street from the homes, this, now, on Gulf Street, they're not as aesthetically pleasing as Fort Trumbull, or as well, certainly as, as what we propose, but the concept is the same, they have fencing, they have stone barriers, they have unattractive fencing with locks on them, you'll see the signage, which is, I think, less attractive as, we have that nautical theme, so you see exactly what's happening on Gulf Street with the addresses. And so what we're saying is, this document of fundamental, doctrine, I'm sorry, of fundamental fairness would require that we also get equal treatment with, with those types of property owners in general. Now, the, the argument that we have on, in terms of the fencing, is that with all due respect, Mr. Harris is wrong, and the argument is simple, and it's based on your zoning regulations. And I have the regulations here. You'll see what I've highlighted on this exhibit. Lot frontage is defined on curved streets, and obviously, on the site plan, we're on a street with a huge curve. The lot frontage is the arc between the side lot lines, which, and that, that arc is to be considered the lot frontage. Here's the sidelines, the side setback, so this would be the lot frontage. Secondly, and that's important, because we want to get to the point where this is a front yard, it's not a rear yard, it's a front yard. Secondly is your definition of a rear lot line, you're, and that's also highlighted on that same page, and that is the lot line opposite the street line. Opposite the street line is the rear line. And logically, that would say that if opposite the street is the rear line, adjacent to the street would be the, the, the front lot, the front lot, or the, front of the lot, or the lot frontage. The next page is important, because it's, and I'm quoting, the definition of fences and walls on four-one-seven, and it says that fences and walls not exceeding three feet in height, not exceeding three feet in height, in any front yard may be erected without a zoning permit. That's four-point-one-point-seven. So as a matter of right, you can build without a zoning permit a sign, a fence, if it's in the front yard, which ours is, and if it's, if it doesn't exceed three feet, which ours will not exceed three feet. And you could do that as a matter of right. Then the last page in that exhibit is a definition of structure, and we need that when we go into the flood hazard zone, which is the second part of the presentation. And the structure in your regulations is defined to include fences more than three feet in height. Fences more than three feet are considered a structure, and so if your fence is three feet or less, it's not a structure, which means it can be built in the flood hazard area, again, without a permit. And really, that is the long and the short of our argument. We're saying that Mr. Harris isn't applying these regulations, we have a front yard, we have a fence, three feet or less in, in height, and according to your regulations, we don't need any, any approval to construct that fence. Now, that, technically, subject to the public and your questions, would really end the ZEO appeal argument, and I think what I'd like to do, just quickly, is run through the second part, which is the variance, and then, if the chairman will allow, we'll open it up to the public or to the, if you have any questions. But the, assuming your position is that I'm wrong, and Mr. Harris is right, if you take that position, then we would need a variance for the fence. I don't think that's the case, for the reasons we just went through. There's no question we need a variance for the signs. And again, for the record, I do have the mailings on the variance application, which is item number four, which I'll submit. And again, we're going to incorporate all those exhibits in each of the two applications. The signs, well, let's talk about the three variances. Assuming I'm wrong, you would, we would need a variance for the fence, to permit a three-foot-high decorative fence, a long beach avenue, not the shore, not along Long Island Sound, but a long beach avenue, as shown on the site plan. That would be a very, to vary section four-one-seven-three of your regulations. Secondly, and there's no dispute, we do need a variance of section five-three-four-one to permit the signage, these are, again, fourteen inches by twelve inches, as shown on the site plan, are no trespassing signs on parcel two, and we would need, in any case, a variance of that. And then the third variance is, we would need to, a variance of your flood hazard zone regulations to place the signs, not the fence, because the fence is in the structure, but for the, but for the signs in the flood zone, we would need a variance. It's a different type of a variance, but you'd need a variance. So, for the legal standards, for a typical variance, as you know, you have General Statute eight-six-A, and your own regulations, nine-point-two, and in this case, you have a third regulation, which is five-eight-four-eight-two, your flood hazard zone regulation, which says you can get a variance to, to, in this case, erect a sign in a flood hazard area. But to do that, not, not in the flood hazard zone, but for the other standard variance, as you know, traditionally, we have to show hardship, and you have to show no adverse impact on the comprehensive plan. What that means, in plain English, is that what we propose, what any applicant proposes, would not cause adverse impact or harm to the neighborhood, it's something that is in harmony with the neighborhood, which wouldn't harm the neighborhood. So those are really the two tests of granting a hardship. And in this case, we have the third set of regulations for the flood hazard, which we'll get to in a minute. So for the hardship, what is the hardship here? First, it's the literal enforcement of your regulations, which were, in this case, going to cause exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship to my clients. It's a fact that, it's a fact that our property, parcel two, which you can see, is to say it's irregularly shaped, is, is, is certainly not an overstatement, it's irregularly shaped, the topography you saw on those pictures is extremely difficult, you have the drop-off, you have the rock outcroppings, it's a property that is unlike a lot of our neighbors, it's unlike our neighbors, and it really is unique in many ways. The, obviously, you have, it borders Long Island Sound, but if you take all those things, the topography, the configuration, the Long Island Sound, and then if you add to its location, this property is located right around the corner from a public beach, and what happens is a lot of people from the public beach march down Beach Avenue, and, as I said, invade or trespass upon our property, so its location is another hardship. And then the last thing on hardship, which affects our property uniquely, is, and I think you, you probably know it, because you may have taken a ride down Beach Avenue on a, on a nice summer day yourself, and I don't live far, by the way, from this area, so I know it intimately, and if you go down Beach Avenue, particularly around Memorial Day through a nice day in October, I was trying, I, the best comparison I have, it's, it's like going down Fifth Avenue, if you're a tourist in New York City, going down Fifth Avenue on Easter Sunday during the Easter Parade. You have people walking up and down all day, and these people look at our property, and not everybody, and certainly not our neighbors, but a lot of people walk right onto the property. So all of these things combined are the legal hardship that is peculiar to our property, and is a result of the conditions on our property. So, because of this hardship, what happens is that, number one, my clients cannot adhere to that administrative directive that was in that, in the booklet, the Health Department directing, saying, keep your property safe, keep it clean. It's next to impossible, you see in the, the evidence of that in the pictures. Secondly, you have a situation where the general public itself has health and safety issues, and their health and safety is at risk, because sure as shooting, somebody is going to get hurt on that property one day, if this continues. Thirdly, you have the issue of, as a result of this hardship, of my clients and the city exposing themselves to liability if nothing is done. So, without a fence, a very modest fence, and these no trespassing signs, nothing is going to get better, it's going to only get worse, and these neighbors will tell you, it gets worse every year, worse and worse. So that's the hardship, it's legal hardship, it's good legal hardship, in my opinion. The, I add to that the fact that that whole doctrine of fundamental fairness that I was talking about, why is it good for Fort Trumbull, why is it good for Gulf Beach, but it's not good for us? The law says that's not right. If it's good for our neighbors, it's good for us, if it's comparable, and it's totally comparable conditions. And then the second, or last part of the traditional variance test is that harmony with your comprehensive plan, is it something that will not negatively impact the neighborhood? And I think the best evidence of something that will not harm the neighborhood is how much support we have from the neighborhood. And in that, in that case, we have a petition that I'd like to submit. Do I have the originals? Hold, these are the letters, right? And these are the petitions, okay, I got it. Here, I got it.
These are the original and copies of the petition that I have. And this is exactly how we did the petition, the petition is bad, the fact that it's all for the best. We have two signatures, I'm looking at the petition. And this is actually the original, that's what I'm using. So we have a copy of that, and then, while I'm working, we have immediately the original, one of these six letters of support. One of these four letters of support. And we're certainly not going to read them into the record, we just incorporated them into the record, but all these, the petitions, say that we're, they're in favor of our applications, and the letters of support say, it's a small letter, do you have a copy? And it says that, it's addressed to the ZBA, City of Milford, please accept this letter as wholehearted support for the applications, both applications, filed by parcel two owner to permit a three-foot decorative fence along Beach Avenue, and to permit no trespassing signs on its property. The owner should be able to prevent the frequent and dangerous activities undertaken by children and adults trespassing on its property, such activities are detrimental to the entire Beach Avenue neighborhood. And you could see the signatures of the various people, I don't want to take time to go through all of them right here, they're all neighbors, all directly affected by the actions that take place on a daily basis on that property. Now, the last set of variances that we have to comply with, and it'll be very quick, is the flood regulation. And I have a, and just to highlight them, the first thing is, it happens to be a coastal site plan review, but it's here just to show you that specifically exempt from the CAM Act, the CAM Act is property within a thousand feet of Long Island Sound or various rivers, and if you want to build anything, you need CAM approval, but there are things that are exempted from CAM, or coastal approval, and that is in five-twelve-two. What is exempted specifically would be construction of new fences and signs, and it's highlighted here, so we don't need any CAM approval. CAM is not concerned about a fence, three feet in height, or a couple of no trespassing signs. However, five-point-eight of your regulations talks about flood hazard and flood damage prevention, and you'll see on, I numbered the pages on the bottom, on page three, it says that if you're in a VE zone, is one of the zones which we're in, on parcel two's in a VE zone, not parcel one, but parcel two is, and if you're in that zone, according to five-point-eight-point-four, any structure, structure, has to comply with this regulation. Fence does not, because it's not a structure. Now, if you're in this zone, and you want to do the construction and ask for a variance, on page four, you're going to see the conditions for variance, and they're straightforward, at the bottom of my numbered page four on the right. Variances shall only be issued, and we're looking for a variance so that we could do these signs, only be issued if, number one, there's a showing of good and sufficient cause, and I hope that I've demonstrated that there certainly is good and sufficient cause to have these improvements on the property. And then on the next page, B, it, you have to determine, it's your determination, on a number of things. First, in granting this variance and giving us the right to post these signs, would it result, number one, in any increased flood heights? Well, of course, that's ludicrous, we're not increasing any flood heights. Two, will it cause any additional threats to public safety? And an argument, a real argument could be made, that it's a threat to public safety if you don't approve these applications, because somebody will get hurt. don't approve these applications because somebody will get hurt. Next, will there be extraordinary public expense? Again, the argument, if somebody sues, they're going to sue us, they're going to sue the city. This is actually saving public expense. Next, will it create a nuisance? I would maintain, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, that there is a nuisance caused by all these people and children, day and night, on this property. Next, will it cause fraud or victimization of the public? And the one who's been victimized, frankly, are our neighbors and my clients. They're the ones that are really being victimized. And lastly, will it conflict with any existing local laws? And there's no local laws that we're going to be conflicting with. So I think we pass muster for a variance based on these regulations itself. So in conclusion, and I'm going to wrap it up now, I just want the board to know that my way of thinking, there's nothing more basic, and there's nothing more sacred in our country's constitutional law than the protection and the preservation of property rights. Parcel two is my client's property. It's been their property for about 40 years, and they have the right to take steps to protect their property. In granting these petitions, you will be protecting, in my opinion, not only my clients, but the public and the city. I think we are deserving of your approval, and hopefully you will approve these petitions. That ends my presentation, subject to any questions that the board may have.
You're ready for questions? Mr. Willinger, you're ready for questions?
Do I have any questions?
No. I'm asking you if you're ready for questions.
Oh, I am ready, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Soto.
Okay. My question to you is, the majority of these pictures you're showing is people trespassing on your client's property. But also, the majority of these pictures, there's a sign that says Borough of Woodmont, Beach Open, Sunrise to 10:00 P.M. That's on your, supposedly on your client's property. I mean, when I drove through there, it looked to me like a public beach.
That's one, that's one of the problems.
Well, why is that sign there?
The Borough installed that sign, and I think we're going to have to address that with the Borough. Because I absolutely agree with you. I think that's, that's causing some of the confusion itself. But taking that sign off isn't going to end it.
Well, it looks like it's advertising it as a, as a public beach.
Well, the intention of the sign was because there's a public beach right, right around the corner, literally, from that sign. And I think that's what, what they really intended. But placing it there is not, is not helping us, and you're right.
Do we have any, you all set? Do we have any documents that it's a legally created parcel? Who's been paying the taxes on that property?
The
You keep saying it's our property, our property. Do you have proof that
Well, the proof are the deeds that have been filed for years. And this is a survey, and a surveyor, a licensed surveyor, has pointed that out. And it's common law. In fact, if you'd like, I could get into that, but I might as well to answer your question. To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, specifically. I cite to a rather interesting case. The, this memorandum, I'll just summarize it quickly, says that, and it's been the law in Connecticut for, at least since 1870, that the owner of land abutting navigable waters, which include Long Island Sound, owns the land to the high water mark. Now, the high water mark, which includes the rocks, are shown on this survey. That's why he pointed out the mean high water mark, and you'll have the mean low water mark. The law is, from the low water to the high water is owned by the State of Connecticut. From the low water out to sea is owned by the federal government. And from the high water mark inward, landward, is owned by the owner of the abutting property. So that's the law. There's a number of cases which I cite in that first paragraph that says that. There's no dispute as to that. But there's also, and I attach it to this memo, a Supreme Court, a Connecticut Supreme Court decision that was the McHauso versus Borough of Woodmont case, a 1978 case concerning property right down the road from our piece. And it held a number of things, a very interesting case, but I, you don't have time to hear interesting cases, I understand. But to answer your question, it held that the landlord, the landowner has title to the area above the mean high water mark. From the high water mark inward, landward, is the property owner's property. And that is the common law. But it also held that the public does not, the general public does not have an easement over that property. And just to quote this case, we have held that the unorganized public, the general public, the fishermen, the guys on the bikes, anybody walking around, cannot acquire rights or easements by prescription. That means by use. You can't get it by adverse possession, and you can't get it by prescription. You can't just by, because you used it. And it also says, and maybe it's a little too technical, but there can't be an implied dedication to the public. In that case, there was a piece of property, like ours, on the water side, and the public had, unlike ours, there was a wall, a sidewalk. If I have that case here, there's a sidewalk that was built on top of the land next to the water, and there was a fence. And the plaintiff wanted to put a gate to block people from going, using the sidewalk. And the Borough sued, and the Borough said, "Wait a minute. All the people in the Borough were walking up and down for 100 years." And the court said, "No, they don't get an easement. They don't get a adverse possession, the general public, and the owner had the right to put the gate." So the long and the short of it, I hope it wasn't too long-winded, is we own that property absolutely. It's shown on a survey, and it's fully in accord with Connecticut law.
So it's filed with the city that
Yes.
You indeed own that. Are they paying taxes on that? Are they paying insurance on that?
Well, insurance is hard to get, but they do. They do have insurance, and they do, there is deeds filed with the city, absolutely. I don't know if we have an extra copy. I'll see during the break if I have an extra copy of the deed. But there are two parcels.
You didn't mention, are they paying taxes on it? It's a legal lot. Are they paying taxes on it?
Well, they, obviously, they pay taxes. How much? Pardon me?
Two, that you're deeming as a legal lot and part of 108 Beach Ave. Are they paying taxes on that?
Okay. They pay taxes. Whether the city has divided it as the parcel one and two, I really don't know. But obviously, they've been paying taxes to the city.
Was your, was your question answered? I don't think your question was answered. They're paying, they're paying taxes, but he's asking you.
The premise that you have
They're paying taxes on that parcel, parcel two.
I, I, I don't think, look, whether they pay taxes or not, with all due respect, is immaterial, but, for your decision, but whether, I really don't know if the board, if they get a tax bill, they pay taxes, they've been doing for 40 years. Whether the city says what parcel one is and parcel two is, I don't know if they break it down.
Because your premise is that it's a legal lot, standing lot of itself, parcel two, therefore, that's why you're allowed to have that fence put there on, adjacent to the road. That's your front lot, your front side of that lot. And it's part of, and that 108 owns it. So that's why I was wondering whether you have, you're paying separately
I don't know if they have a, the answer is, I don't know if they have a separate tax bill. But I do know, it's their property, it's been deeded, there's been a series of deeds for 80 years, and we have a survey, surveying, showing parcel two and saying it's a lot. It's a, now, it's a non-conforming lot, as I said. It's pre-existing and non-conforming, but it is a lot.
Just so I understand, all the deeds that go with this 108 show parcel two being owned by, or by 108?
Right, by whoever owned it.
Parcel one, parcel two being one. All deeds show that, show that.
I'm sorry, all deeds?
All the deeds of record show that it is actually
A separate lot.
Parcel one, parcel two are, are one, owned by the same person?
No, they're not owned by the same person. They're owned by two separate entities. Yeah, they're, the property is owned, parcel one, the dwelling, is owned by the Maseri Family Trust. Parcel two is owned by the petitioner, Leaden Corporation.
Any other questions for Mr. Willinger? If not, we're just going to take a, again, we're taking about a five-minute technical break, and we would ask that you not discuss anything that we're talking about right now to yourselves. We'll just be back in a few minutes.
Okay. Fine.
Okay, we're ready to resume.
Good evening. Stephen Harris, Milford zoning enforcement officer. Okay. Before the merits of the applicant's appeal can be examined, it needs to be demonstrated that the appeal concerns a legal lot of record. An examination of the evidence does not support that claim that the area called parcel two is a legal lot of record. In support of his argument, the applicant submitted a boundary survey by Michael W. Finkbiner dated July 21, 2015. This survey purports to show the area known as parcel two. It is shown to be bounded by the mean high water line. However, it does include compass headings for these purported lot lines. A note on number five on this survey mentions two deeds.
Excuse me, Mr. Harris. Can you lift your microphone up just a little higher place? Thank you.
How's this? Better? I'll hold it then. Note number five on the survey mentions two deeds, one at volume 3344, 40, 3345, sorry, page 78, which was signed 9/18/2009 with attached Schedule A dated 3/18/2010, and a second at volume 314, page 105, dated 10/30/1947. Both of these were filed in Milford land records. If you flip over to the 2010 deed, first, let me read this. The 2010 deed describes the parcel at 108 Beach Avenue as being 70 by 125 feet, and mentions certain restrictions and covenants in a deed dated January 19, 1900, found at volume 57, page 329 of the land records. The 2010 deed does not describe land extending into Long Island Sound. So if you flip forward, you can read the meets and bounds description on Schedule A for yourselves, where it says, "East by Beach Avenue, sometimes known as Beach Street, 70 feet. South by Beach Avenue, sometimes known as Beach Street, 125 feet, more or less. West by land now a formerly of Jesse L., Headie, 70 feet. North by land now a formerly of Caroline A. Stillman, 125 feet, more or less. Together with said premises are subject to certain covenants and restrictions contained in the deed from Edgar T. Clark et al. to Charles B. Allen dated January 19, 1900, and recorded volume 57, page 329 of the Milford land records." So if parcel two was indeed a parcel, it would have been conveyed with a separate meets and bounds in the 2010 deed, but that's not the case. So if we then look to the 1900 deed to see what's going on there, and it describes the same one, the same 70 by 125-foot parcel at 108 Beach Avenue, and lists numerous restrictions and covenants, but does not describe any land extending into Long Island Sound. Also, the 1925 Sanborn Fire Insurance Map in the Planning and Zoning Office only shows that same 70 by 125-foot lot at 108 Beach Avenue, and it doesn't show any portion of a lot extending into Long Island Sound. That Sanborn map is located in your packet, and you can take a look. Also, the 1900 deed, January 19, 1900 deed is also there. I've underlined the portion, reading from the 1900 deed, I've underlined the portion where it has the meets and bounds description, and it describes a 70 by 125-foot lot. It then goes on to describe a five-foot-wide passway out to what used to be called Cherry Street, which is now Village. And then it goes into a laundry list of restrictions and covenants. It does not mention any land out into the sound. The second deed mentioned on note five in the 2010 deed, found at volume 314, page 105, is dated 10/30/1947. It also describes that same 70 by 125-foot lot at 108 Beach, and it also describes an unenclosed area extending out into Long Island Sound. So if you flip open to your packet, to the 1947 deed, you will see that language. You'll see that language called out there. It describes the house lot, the five-foot passway, and then it says, also, on my right title, interest in or to a certain parcel lying between Beach Avenue and the waters of Long Island Sound, and so forth and so on. And it mentions those same covenants of the 1900 deed. Now, the problem with the 1947 deed is that subdivision was enacted in Milford in 1929. Since then, the only way to legally create a lot is to present a plan to what's now called the Planning and Zoning Board and have it approved with the map being signed and recorded on the land records. In this case, it appears that what's called parcel two was created by deed in 1947. A search of the land records did not return a signed and recorded map of this parcel, nor does the assessor have a record of it. It also has no street address and no map block and parcel identifying number. Since 1929, new lots in Milford can only be created by an official act of the Planning and Zoning Board, not by deed. The area called parcel two was created by deed in 1947. Therefore, it is not a legal lot of record. And the applicants do not own that parcel because no such parcel exists. So in conclusion, I would respectfully ask that this board deny the applicant's appeal for the reason that since the area called parcel two is not a legal lot of record, there is no decision to appeal. And if the board should deny this application, it would also render moot the variance application for the fence and the signs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harris?
No?
No. Mr. Willinger, anything that you want to say before I ask for any other comments on this appeal?
Yes. With, with all due respect to Mr. Harris, he's not a, an attorney that I know of. He's not a title examiner, and he's certainly not a surveyor. We have a surveyor who has checked the land records and who is licensed by the State of Connecticut and who has of Connecticut, and who has opined in this survey, that's the record in this proceedings, that parcel two is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot that is now owned and has been owned for forty years by Leyden Corporation. I have, had I known that Mr. Harris, who he's never disclosed in any of our discussions, that he thought that there was a title issue, I would have brought a, an opinion of, of a title examiner, who, and, and all the deeds. You see, this, but I didn't even think it was of, of an issue, but in any event, the deed that he's citing in 2010 is only the deed of parcel one. Parcel two isn't mentioned in, in there at all. All these deeds from nineteen hundred on, first of all, they're hard to read, secondly, they do make reference of extensions to, to Long Island Sound, but thirdly, and most important, is Beach Avenue, it was that dedication in the eighteen hundreds that, that, that split property which prior to that time, we have records going back into the late eighteen hundreds, which show one parcel, but when that Beach Street came in, that's what bifurcated the property and created parcels one and parcel two. Now, it's not a conforming lot, but that's, it's, it's non-conforming, but it's, but it's still a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. And the analysis done by Mr. Harris, although he did, you know, a somewhat good job for a layperson, does not pass muster in terms of a licensed professional surveyor, and as I said, had I known there was any issue at all on title, I would have gotten and could have gotten a, an opinion of title. And in fact, if, if this board thinks that's an issue, I don't know who he thinks owns the property, I don't know, does property just fall in the, in the air like, like the cloud? Somebody's got to own it. If his suggestion is that the town owns it, there's got to be some taking in the land records, there's to have been no condemnation of that property. The property's existed, the property's been utilized by the Maseri family for forty years. If anything, if you don't, if you don't want to believe me, or the surveyor, or even taking Mr. Harris, let's say he's right and we're wrong, and the surveyor's wrong, if anything, my clients have the property by adverse possession. But look, it's a situation where no one else has claimed that they own the property, we have the best evidence, which is a survey, proving that we own the property, and the fact is that creating a, trying to install a fence and some no trespassing signs on this property is nothing more than protecting the general public and my client. Now, if the board is really interested in this argument of title, then I would request that we complete the hearing tonight, and I will submit a opinion of title next, at next month's hearing, and hold the hearing up for that, that issue, or any other issue that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? I believe new information was introduced.
Yes, yes, Mr. Harris.
Again, Stephen Harris, Milford ZEO. Mr. Willinger repeatedly calls parcel two property or a parcel, but he has not submitted any information that establishes that this is indeed a lot of record. If he had that information, he should have submitted it, he did not. My examination of the deeds, the deeds mentioned by his own surveyor led me down this path to discover that there is indeed no parcel there to talk, to talk about. It's not a matter of who owns this parcel or not, the, the crux of my argument is this parcel does not exist at all. There is no parcel, it's just rocks out in Long Island Sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. I can't believe what I just heard. First of all, we did submit, he said, we didn't submit any evidence at all. We did submit evidence, we have a survey certified by a licensed and certified surveyor, that's the best evidence. Secondly, I don't understand, he, he says that the lot doesn't exist at all, the property doesn't exist at all. I mean, that borders on being ludicrous, with all due respect, the land is there, and it's our land, and it's shown on a survey. Again, I will reiterate, if you have any issue as to title, you can continue this hearing, and I'd be glad to submit a, an opinion of title for next month. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else speaking on this appeal with Mr. Willinger, on Mr. Willinger's? And what Mr. Willinger's asking for, are you speaking on that? You're all, okay, all right. So, who else would be speaking on this appeal?
Good evening.
Maybe, maybe we could have some comments, maybe somebody might be here from the borough of Woodmont, and we might have some history of what's going on down there, that might be helpful to us also.
Good evening, I'm actually representing my husband, Edward Bonessi, warden of Woodmont, and I'm sorry he could not be here tonight, this is a letter that I'm reading on his behalf. Dear Mr. Tuzola and Board, I'm sorry that I am unable to attend tonight's meeting of the Milford Zoning Board of Appeals. However, I would like to express my support of the Maseri family and their constant struggle to maintain privacy. In my position as warden of the borough of Woodmont, I have received numerous complaints over the years about people littering, loitering, and camping overnight on other beach areas, as well as the area in question. Personally, I have observed these violations on many occasions. The most shocking instance I witnessed was a family that had pitched a camping tent and slept overnight at 108 Beach Avenue last August. Since then, these activities have persisted only a short distance down the road under the historic umbrella tree in front of one hundred Beach Avenue. As a rule, most Woodmont residents welcome people from outside the borough because we know they appreciate the swimming, fishing, and beautiful water views along the seawalk walkways. However, it is disappointing when public and private property are disrespected by littering, loitering, parking on private property, and in no parking zones. In closing, I would like to thank you in advance for your consideration, and I urge the board to approve the variance for the applicant. Sincerely, Edward W. Bonessi Jr., Borough of Woodmont, Warden. I'd like to enter this for you.
Can you please repeat the name and, and the address?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Edward. My name, Raquel, R-A-Q-U-E-L, Bonessi, eighty-three Beach Avenue.
Come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Chisaric, fifty-one Village Road, Milford, Connecticut, also a member of Woodmont. I oppose the fence for a number of reasons. It's a very beautiful area. I had no idea it was private property.
Hold on, hold on. You're, you're in opposition to?
Opposition.
Okay. I, I was asking if there was anyone else speaking?
For?
For, on, or on this appeal. Is there anyone else speaking on this appeal, before we get into that? You'll have your turn.
My name is Ellen Austin, I live at fourteen Village Road in Woodmont. I'm going to speak as probably the oldest, longest resident of the people here of the borough of Woodmont. My family have lived there since nineteen fifty-six. I wish my husband were well enough to be here, but he's Richard Austin, who was the warden for thirty-some-odd years. His family moved to Woodmont in nineteen forty-five, and I'm only clarifying that so that you know that when I speak, I speak from memory and not from facts. I had not realized until within probably the past year or two that that was even private property. My biggest concern, other than what's been mentioned, is that's not rock, it's shale. And every storm we have, whether it be major or minor, a great deal of it washes up on the sidewalk and even into the roadway. If you walk out on that, you're taking your life in your own hands because it breaks off very easily. And there is a portion of it between the biggest part, which you see from the road, to out, to the point where it used to be joined. Now there's a valley there. To the left, where they're speaking about the tree, the lawn used to extend about sixteen feet out, maybe twenty feet out from the sidewalk, it's down less than half of that because the storms have taken so much out. The tree, the side facing the water, is washed out. I'm amazed that the tree is still there, because you would think that so much damage from the water would have caused that to go away. So if anyone on this board, or anyone else, needs to know more about the history, best person to talk to is Richard Austin. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dolores Hannan, and I live at one-ten Beach Avenue, and I am next-door neighbor to the Michis, we've been next-door neighbors for thirty, I've been there for thirty years with my husband and family. And I can't say enough about the family, Michieri family, they're wonderful neighbors, and they take great care of the property. And it's always been my understanding that it was private property, but I always knew that the Michiris, you know, over the years, it has never been, the, the issues that have arisen over the last couple of years were never like this. People always would go, go out to the rocks and would fish way out, but now, things are changing, and where, the area that they've always taken care of, the lawn, cleaning up, is just getting more and more ridiculous. I corroborate everything that Attorney Willinger said tonight, I did not have any idea that this was going to be an issue of ownership, although I do totally agree with Mr. Sota that, that I've suggested that that sign be taken down, which says Borough of Woodmont, because I do believe that doesn't really show that this is private property, and so people are confused. And it isn't fair to the people, in a way, that come and see that sign and then think they can be there. So I think that should be taken down, and I think it is absolutely imperative that the fence that they've designed, something like, like that go up, assuming that this is private property, and I believe it is, that that go up to protect everybody, the people that come and the people that own. My property, my husband's property and mine, has the exact same situation, and our deed shows it, that we own on the beach side. And along that cove, and I understand, Mr. Harris, it is confusing, the way the deeds read and all the different things that have happened, but in going back, we've been doing a lot of work on researching that area due to the really destroyed, the areas being destroyed by the storms, by Sandy, by Irene, just by north, a good northeast storm. And we're losing sand, obviously, we're losing the wall, starting to decay, the borough has been trying to help support it, we've been in contact with the DEEP, the state, to try to save technically the city road and that wall. So we understand that there's been changes in the deeds on that whole stretch of beach, and it has been our understanding, through much research with Mr. Austin, and many of the people who have lived there, the Board of Burgess's, and the city and the state, that originally, as Attorney Willinger said, those beach properties were to the high tide mean mark. And over the years, there were definite, there were changes made. I don't believe there were, so there are a few other houses on that cove where there were changes made to the deed with the city and with the borough, but to my understanding, Michiris and mine and a number of others were never changed. So I think it would only be fair to everybody to mark it so people know, know, because I think there's such confusion on it, and let people know that, you know, it is private, and that, that way, when people are asked not to picnic, not to barbecue, not to tent, tent out, that, you know, they will comply. So I hope you consider all those things. I don't know if this ownership thing is going to go any further, but to my knowledge, I don't think it should, so, thank you.
Anyone else speaking on this appeal?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Phil Vitro, I live on ten Carmen Road North here in Milford, and I am an alderman, I represent the residents of the borough of Woodmont as a fourth district alderman. I'm also a, was a former planning and zoning commissioner for two terms. I, I agree with Attorney Willinger that the Milford zoning regulations, Articles four, four point one, point seven, sections allow a fence three foot or less in any residential front yard. I also agree that the yard of parcel two is the area adjacent to Beach Avenue. The proposed fence meets the criteria to be permitted as a right of, right-of-way within any variance. I am very familiar with Woodmont and the beach area neighborhood, and I have heard many concerns calling me regarding traffic on Beach Avenue, complaints about the trash and the debris, and the unlawful activities such as camping, as Attorney Willinger has spoken. A lot of late, late night noise and other dangerous activities taking place on parcel two. These activities are harming the quality of life that should be enjoyed by the Beach Avenue neighborhood. Parcel two is a private property and needs to be treated as such. Property owners have a right to take reasonable steps to protect their property, and the pictures that you have seen in the, are worth a thousand words, the application should be approved. I think that fence is necessary to show where the man's property is so that there isn't any illegal trespassing, and also the signs that you spoke about before should be allowed as well to, to, to show that it is private property, and people should be aware of that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking?
Jackie Hanek, one-oh-two Beach Avenue, I live across the street there. The one item that doesn't seem to be mentioned, because people are using this property, there is no parking, no loading or unloading on Beach Avenue, and because they are using this as more like their park area, the cars are stopping constantly on the street, on the curve, which is very dangerous, they're unloading canoes, paddleboards, small boats with gas engines, there is no boat loading area there, and that is also becoming an issue in the area. They're parking along the street, the fishermen sit out in front of my house, actually, the other day, they parked right out, unloaded all their fishing gear, fished for twenty minutes, left their car on the street, they're all, you know, seeing one another there, so it's creating parking, and to me, a dangerous situation, kids on bikes, cars coming around the corner, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joanne, one-ten Beach Ave, I live right next door to them. I, I know the zoning rules and rules were designed for, to, to protect us, our public. I understand Steve's position, he's trying to protect the public, but not everything always fits in that little box. That's why we have this board, and I'm in total in favor of, of his application, and I, I hope you grant it. It's something that should be seen case by case. I understand Steve's position totally. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking?
Favor of the appeal.
Anyone else speaking in favor of the appeal? Anyone else speaking in favor of the appeal? None? Opposition to the appeal? Thank you for your patience. I just had to stop you, so go ahead.
Thank you. Mary Chisaric, again, 51 Village Road. I apologize, I didn't know the form. Again, I oppose the fence, not the people. I appreciate their problems with the neighborhood and the situation with the people coming and camping out on the lawn there. But as noted by Mr. Sota, there is a sign directly in front of this piece of property that says Borough of Woodmont. And as a person who lives in Woodmont, I spend many morning there on that piece of property saying my prayers. It's one of the most beautiful areas in the area. I can't tell you the amount of peace and calmness that you can get from that area. And I'm not surprised that there are so many people who come to that area to try and enjoy it. Certainly, there are many people who leave a lot of trash in the area. And I really think that what we're doing here by putting up a little fence is going to stop me from walking up there and saying my prayers. And it's not going to stop those fishermen who are going to come down and go around a decorative fence and continue to fish and continue to, you know, leave trash out there. There is no trash can in front of the area. The borough has not done anything to take down the sign or to indicate that it's private property or to address any of the issues. Very rarely see a police officer down there. I think we're trying to zone an enforcement issue. And, you know, putting up fences in Woodmont, there are no other fences that say no private property, no trespassing. There are a lot of areas where people jump off walls and jump off fences. And unfortunately, they do leave trash. And when I'm walking, I try to pick up that trash. But there's a lot of liability down there. For many years, this piece of property had a very large piece of metal sticking up on it. And I know that, again, because I stand there to say my prayers in the morning. And there's a, you know, there's this piece of metal that's sticking up out of the ground that I always thought was very unsafe. But yet, nothing was done about that for many years. I was approached by a neighbor who... We're all very friendly in the neighborhood to sign the petition. And I thought about it, and I thought about the dog that I lost that I used to take pictures up there with. And I thought, well, this is not a good idea for me. It really says to me that the signs that we put in front of Woodmont that say Welcome to Woodmont don't mean Welcome to Woodmont. What they mean is, if you live on the water, you're entitled to put fences up and keep other people off of the water. And I oppose that idea. And I oppose the concept of a decorative fence that says Private Property that keeps people from enjoying one of the most beautiful areas in Woodmont. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Bill Coleman. I live at 20 Blackall Road, about a block from the site. And I want to speak against the petition. Again, with no disrespect to my neighbors, I have a very different take. And just want to share it with you. Thank you for your kind attention and your service to the community. I want to thank, well, man, I'll call my colleague as I work for the City of Bridgeport and the Office of Planning and Economic Development. And no disrespect to Attorney Willinger, having earned his law degree in that sheepskin, to be a good public servant who does the research, cares about the public good, and makes this case is just as legitimate. And I want to thank you as a citizen for the work you do from Milford, similar to the work I do in Bridgeport. And it's important, and you do it well. This is a big issue. It's not just about this little piece of property. It's about the broader issue of access. I find it almost absurd and surreal as I'm listening to these arguments that in 1896, a public right-of-way was established, including a public walkway that runs the length of Woodmont, length and breadth, with the exception of one block, where there are private properties that directly front the water. And what the attorney didn't mention, because he said he didn't want to go into case law, is that the one case where folks said, the Supreme Court said, you know what, they have a property right there, a private property right, was in that block, where that long continuous public stretch is interrupted for that only, that stretch. Then again, in the extremity. So here we are in Woodmont and in the state generally, trying to encourage public access to the waterfront. You see signs right next to the Vanessi's house, there's a beautiful public access way. You see some on the eastern side, and you see some on the far western side toward the Oyster River, public access. And now we're talking about, in a way I can't even fathom, putting up a little fence. We call it a tasteful fence. There's nothing tasteful about fencing in the ocean. All right? And you're all from New England. God bless these folks, but I don't see them there that much. The plates I see are from New York. I mean, they've owned the property for 40 years, but I'm there every day. And you remember our New England poet, Robert Frost? He often misquoted that poem, "The Mending Wall." It says, "Good fences make good neighbors." That's not actually the heart of the poem. The heart of the poem says, "Something there is that doesn't love a wall, that wants it down." And before I put up a wall, I'd ask myself what I'm walling in or walling out and to whom I'm like to give a fence. Pun intended. So there's a spirit to this argument that you're all being asked to consider. And a lot of the issues you have been brought to your attention are, as my neighbor pointed out, enforcement issues. I'm almost scared to go home after hearing the way Chuck Willinger described my neighborhood. Got gangs, I got dangerous fishermen, I've got nudists, I got people on dangerous bikes, because I don't see it that way. I have a son, he's a mountain biker. I see the kids jumping the rocks with their bikes and their helmets. I see the kids who jump off Flag Rock. I see the kids who ride their bikes off of the sidewalk that juts out along Beach Avenue, just a few lots down from here. I see people enjoying the water. Now, you may remember that it was a few years back, I don't know, maybe five, six, seven years back, the borough itself citing insurance and liability issues. And make no mistake about it, that's what this is about. And all the tortured arguments about a front lot and a rear lot, this was a public right-of-way that was established. There are a couple of leftover fragments that didn't make any sense to build the road out that way. That's what you got. And I can tell you, from looking at the land records in the City of Bridgeport, there are plenty of remnant properties, zones, subdivisions, and little pieces get left out. And they don't exist legally, and they don't belong to anybody. But the argument isn't really about whether they can produce a survey or an opinion of title. As a good lawyer, you better be able to produce an opinion of title. It's also about common sense. That's a public right-of-way since 1896. Now, 119 years later, it's a problem? Even the old timers, the old timers who've been here saying, "I always thought it was public." Your common sense observation about the sign? Don't lose hold of that, it makes sense to me. So if someone has a problem with insurance, you know, I understand that, but that's a financial issue. And even the attorney would affirm that financial issues are not hardship. In fact, if that's the crux of your argument, you'll guarantee a lawsuit because it won't hold up. This is a land use decision, not about enforcement of social mores. So as I said, maybe seven years ago, the borough itself tried to put up a fence at the base of Belmont Street on a fishing pier. I don't know if any of you remember that time. Caused a lot of controversy. Ultimately, it was taken down. It played out in the papers. And we can't fool ourselves into thinking there isn't a cultural issue here. There isn't a class issue here. There isn't an economic issue here. The borough is very affluent. It's 96% white. It's 3% Hispanic. The folks who fish and come down are Latino. They're black. They're working-class people. And these... When you put up a fence, like we did as a borough on that little fishing pier off of Belmont Street, people get the message. And I just don't think that's the message we need to be sending. I come out, like many neighbors, and clean up the beach. I have every sympathy for the difficulties in cleaning up the beach, but it's the beach. It's not a piece of private property. And I don't need a... I don't need the fence. So I thank you for considering these issues. Don't confuse assertions with proof. There are other ways that this could be addressed. It's clear that there's the need for clarification. And I can tell you, as somebody who hikes, there's plenty of law that protects citizens who have private land where there are public easements and public use. You wouldn't have any hiking trails in Connecticut, not mention the Appalachian Trail in Connecticut, if that law didn't exist. It's very clear in the Connecticut statutes that people are protected against liability for these kinds of situations. Could this still be clarified? Could a formal easement be granted to the borough? Could the property be donated to the borough and have that kind of stuff cleared up? Yes, but that's not our concern. This is about land use. And land use shouldn't be responding to a private interest. It should be responding to the public trust. And the attorney says there's nothing more sacred than private property rights. But there is, and that's the public trust. And that's what I'm asking you to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking? Mr. Willinger, you can have the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The first speaker, there's two people that spoke in opposition. The first lady did mention that our fence may not stop people from coming on the property. And that's true. It may not stop people from coming onto that property. But it at least establishes that if they get hurt on that property, my clients are not necessarily liable, and the city is certainly not liable because it's not city property. The great majority of the neighbors... There's only two people that spoke in opposition. The great majority of neighbors in this neighborhood want to make sure that this property is used in a manner that it should be used in, and that is as private property and not as a circus that's conducted on a daily basis. Now, Bill Coleman doesn't live directly across the street from this property. Bill Coleman has a lot of different issues that he's spit out here, talking about the population of 96% of the people are white, talking about a fence like it's the Berlin Wall. This is a three-foot-high decorative fence. And I don't see what the big deal is. Certainly, nothing to warrant a violation of any public trust. The public trust doctrine has no part at all in what we're standing here arguing about tonight. This is not a fence that's going to prevent anyone... We're not blocking views of the property. We're doing what we can to protect ourselves, protect the city, and protect this property. There's plenty of places where people could fish, could get access if they want to fish around the corner or in front of those rocks, they certainly could. A lot of them do that depending on the tides. And we're not blocking that at all. But what we're trying to prevent is the kind of conduct that takes place on a daily basis, and that's evidenced in those pictures. And Mr. Coleman is right. This is about land use, and it's only about land use. So let's direct everything back. It's not about issue of title. You know, before I finish on Mr. Coleman's point, I just want to digress for a minute. And I read a little bit more carefully, I had the time to read, the... This deed that's submitted with Mr. Harris's materials. And if you notice in this deed, and this is one of the predecessors of title to us, Gladys Maples conveyed our property to George Field and Agnes Field. And there's others that are before and after this time. And what this was is, and it's in here highlighted, the first parcel is 108 Beach Avenue, which is 70 by 120. That's Parcel 1. Then there's the passway. The passway happens to be not the passway to the beach, but the passway behind the house to the north. And then, though, there's this other piece that's picked up in other deeds. I just don't have it here because it's... I didn't even think it was a title issue. And if it is a title issue, there's other recourse. This is a zoning board, not a title examination board. But it says here clearly in this deed, "Also, all my right, title, and interest into that certain parcel, certain parcel, lying between Beach Avenue..." Don't forget, Beach Avenue was created in 1896, I think. It's an exhibit here. Created between Beach Avenue and the waters of Long Island Sound. Now, that's the parcel that we're talking about. And they go on, and it's right in this deed, volume 314, page 10. The point is, even if there was a violation of the subdivision regulations, it's still a piece of property. It's a piece of property where there's not... The fact that it's an unsubdivided lot, there's not going to be a house built there. You know, it's too nonconforming. We can't get a house there. But it's land. It's got to be owned by somebody. And it's owned by one of our predecessors. And this description's been picked up in every deed. Now, it's... He's right in citing one of the deeds that are surveyor cited, but that was only the deed as to Parcel 1. He only picked up... He didn't have the deed to Parcel 2. That was just Parcel 1. So it's right here, title in this various document. It's been... And it's been picked up, and we've had the title examined on this piece. So it really... And if you go down, as Dolores Hannan said, her deeds are like this deed. Everybody's deeds on that side of Beach Avenue. And there was a neighbor of ours, I don't know the name, maybe the client could help me, who recently couldn't deal with the cost of insurance, and she was afraid of the liability. And this is one of our neighbors right across the street. So she went to the city, and I think the city actually acquired. Didn't the city buy the land? That's you, ma'am? You did that?
I did.
Okay. And so historically, what's happened from a deed standpoint, since this is what Harris is... Mr. Harris is talking about is the deed and title. All of a sudden, he's a title examiner. All that property south of Beach Avenue has been owned... In this area, it has been owned by private individuals unless acquired by the town. And the town has never acquired this piece. So there's no question that we own Parcel 2. So now, let's talk about what Mr. Coleman said this is really about. It's not about the public trust. It's not about private property. It's not about the kids. Now, he said that he sees and enjoys kids on bikes riding on the rocks. I can't figure it out, but we don't enjoy seeing the pictures that you saw, kids riding on those rocks, ready to break their skulls one day. We don't enjoy that. But what this is about, and this is the only thing I agree with Mr. Coleman about, is it's about land use. And your regulations, and that's what you have jurisdiction about, ladies and gentlemen of this commission, land use. Your regulations say that you can have in the front yard... And Mr. Harris has never disputed our argument. You heard, he's talking about title, but he's never disputed our argument that the front yard is Beach Avenue. And by the way, his department is consistently held, and there's a regulation that talks of fencing on the waters of Long Island Sound, the south portion of the property bordering Long Island Sound, and how you can't have fences on the Long Island Sound side. And they interpreted the Long Island Sound as being the rear yard. So there's no question from a zoning standpoint that where we want the fence is the front yard of Parcel 2. No dispute, and he didn't dispute it. So if it's the front yard, your zoning regulations say it's not a structure. And as long as it's not in excess of three feet, we could do it as a matter of right. That's number one. Number two, as to the signs, they are... Let's assume they are structures. Then your decision has to be, can they vary that because of the... In particular, it should be because of the zone, the flood hazard that they're in. And the whole idea of the flood hazard zone is allowing any kind of improvement on property on that side in a flood zone, will it risk injury to the general public or to neighbors or the property owners? And I read you that section, and it has very definitive standards when you want to grant a variance or consider granting a variance. And we meet and exceed every one of those standards. And so I say to you, ladies and gentlemen of this commission, your duty, sitting there as a zoning board of appeals, is to help your neighbors. That's why you're here. You're here to help your neighbors if you think your neighbors comply with your law, comply with your regulations, and deserve the help. Here you have tons of letters, petitions, people who live day and night with the problems that are inherent on this piece of property, this unique piece of property. And you're always going to have some naysayers and people that think differently. Well, we have two here tonight, two. But you've heard from close to 100 people by petitions, letters, or personal appearance tonight that think this is a good thing. And so I would ask you, help your neighbors, follow your own zoning regulations, and approve these petitions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Willinger? None? Okay. Okay, the hearing's closed. What are your thoughts?
I think there will be an enforcement issue, whether it's private or public property. I'm not convinced that it's private necessarily. They have a survey that says it's, it's theirs. There's nothing else on our records that we present for Mr. Harris. There's nothing presented for Mr. Harris that would indicate that it is on record as a, a legal lot. So I'm just not convinced of it.
You're not convinced?
And that's what it boils down to, whether it's a legal lot or not, and, and they own it. That's it.
Are you?
I advise with the, with the enforcement issues, the fact that it's not kept up, there's people leaving things around, garbage around and all that. And, you know, I, for us, it comes down to whether this is on record as a legal lot and that they own it.
That was my question also, is ownership, and Mr. Willinger said that, I mean, maybe our thoughts might be, we might continue this, and he said he has, he can produce some documents that would show us that in fact they did own that property. So is there something else to think about?
Well, I'd have a big problem making a ruling, a vote either for or against this until we have that issue, that matter resolved. I mean, you talk about, you know, we're members of this board to do what's right for our citizens and for the city. Well, we got to know what we're dealing with first. I mean, it's as fundamental as that. So until, until I know, and until this board can have a consensus, and that's what this discussion period is about right now, when we determine that we know whether it's private property or not, then we can go forward with a decision. Now, unless we think that that's been established here today, I don't think so. From what I saw, there is a survey from a licensed surveyor, there's no doubt about that. But he referenced certain plots and map points that then were reviewed by another individual who is here now and laid some question into that. So I think all of that is relevant. And until I personally hear about it, I, I don't think that we should vote on it. I think that we should take up Attorney Willinger on his statement that, that they go back and provide further proof, not as punitive damage or anything like that, but just to get it right. Because that's what this is about, right? Is getting it right.
Mr. Sota?
Well, I do feel we have to determine ownership. And I mean, I'm looking at the survey, and that's really the only evidence he produced to us. And I've seen a lot of surveys, and this one really does not have much information on it. I mean, it doesn't even tell us the size of parcel one, it doesn't even tell us the measurements. And the only thing on parcel two, it says .52 acres. So I mean, I think there's some information, more information we need, and especially on determining ownership. I think if they determine ownership, I think the three-foot fence would fly, but you don't need a permit for it. But I think we got to determine ownership.
Any other thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, only as a technical matter, the public hearing has been closed. So you can't accept any new information?
What new information are we taking? You mean, you mean moving forward, if we continue this, we can't continue this, and next month have a?
Once the public hearing-
Proof of ownership?
Once the public hearing has been closed, you cannot accept any new information.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harris is correct on that. But you can continue, and I would invite you to, if you question ownership, to continue this until next month's hearing and leave the, continue it for the sole purpose of determining ownership. I'm not saying we're going to go open up all these issues and go all over this again, but that's your question. And if that's your question, we'll get you the answer, and you could continue this hearing for the sole purpose of determining ownership.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, the public hearing has been closed. You have by law 65 days to make your decision, but you cannot accept new information.
You don't have to close the public hearing.
Mr. Harris, can we vote to reopen it or not?
I don't believe you can.
Well, we need a motion to continue this, and then we'll, we don't, go ahead.
Can we, we can make a motion to deny without prejudice, have them bring it back, offer the information that has been previously presented into testimony, and get confirmation on the ownership of the property. Could we not?
Yes, you could do that.
Seems like the logical choice, right, guys? Like a motion to deny without prejudice?
Second.
Reason for the motion is to get this right, is to actually determine what the next steps for this should be.
We have a motion to deny without prejudice? We have a second on the motion? Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
I have a question.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Denied without prejudice.
So we have to file another application, or two applications, go through that time and expense, because we have a non-expert in title raise a question when he submitted a deed that shows ownership?
Mr. Chairman, that's an ad hominem.
We're going to have to let this go, just the way it is right now, because we're not going to have any other discussions on it. Next item.
Item number five, 52 Laurel Avenue, Zone R5, Sandra Cohen, owner, Section 4-1-4, varied balcony projection to four feet where two feet permitted, map 13, block 146, parcel eight.
You're up for, you're up for item number five, correct? You're up for item number five? Okay. I'm just, we're just going to, we're just going to take another break for a few minutes. Okay. Read number five, please, again.
Number five, 52 Laurel Avenue, Zone R5, Sandra Cohen, owner, Section 4-1-4, varied balcony projection to four feet where two feet permitted, map 13, block 146, parcel eight.
And on a lighter note, I'd like to thank the committee for listening to my request this evening.
We, we need you to identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Sandra Cohen, and I currently rent at 41 Evening Side Drive in Milford until my house at 52 Laurel Avenue is completed. My application of this variance is a modest request of two feet on a legally approved building lot for my deck. My hardship is, the lot is under 2,800 square feet. The setbacks are designed for lots about twice the size of this approved lot and an R5 zone. It is undersized compared to most lots in the neighborhood. My structure, even with a deck, is well under the building lot coverage requirements. The design of this deck will complement several of the already existing decks and patios in the neighborhood, some of which project much further towards the street line than my request. I have taken some neighborhood photos that you are welcome to view. Again, I feel that this is a modest request, humble in nature, the structure will not block any neighbor's views, and the addition of a two-foot projection would allow me the same opportunity that my neighbors already have of being able to place a chair on the deck and enjoy the same views.
Questions for this lady? Anybody gone by there and see the house going up?
Yep.
Fairly large house. This is the only thing she's looking for, is the front. But your house, your house is further, already further toward the street than most on that street, without adding more to the balcony?
I wouldn't say it's further than all of them, it's further than some of them.
Questions, gentlemen? I have to say, lady, we let the lady go.
This is a new construction, and you're not rebuilding anything, right? When I wrote, it's a new construction, right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
It's new construction, it's, it's being built.
This is brand-new construction, yes.
So when you made the plans for it, did, did you consider maybe instead of 50 feet, 48, and then you wouldn't need the two feet for the deck? I mean, you could have shortened it by-
I'm short two feet.
Yeah.
I'm already approved for two feet. I'm asking for another two feet in addition to the two feet that are already allowed.
I understand that, but if you, in your initial plans, if you didn't make it 50 feet, made it 48, you wouldn't have needed the two feet because-
I submitted a plan, I'm not sure what you're asking. As part of the package for this proposal?
No, I, I just thought when you made plans to build the house, you could have taken into consideration the, having that deck not being, having the projected-
In other words, was this deck an afterthought?
Afterthought, or was it in the original plans?
I never realized that it was only a two-foot approval until I drew up the plan.
It was an afterthought, did you realize it?
My builder said to me, you need to go for it in variance if you want this deck at all. Otherwise, it's only going to be two feet.
And what is your hardship?
The hardship is, the lot is under 2,800 square feet. The setbacks are designed for lots about twice the size of this lot that is already approved and an R5 zone. It's an undersized lot compared to most of the lots in the neighborhood. Not all of them, but some of them. And I have photos of other lots, a couple houses away from me, that have decks, upper and lower, that are much closer to the street line than what I am asking for. And I do have photos of those.
You can give us the photos if you'd like.
Okay, they're on my tablet, would you like to look at them?
Uh, no. I'm going to go look at them that way.
How would I get them to you?
Typically, they would be printed, I don't, I don't know the, Mr. Harris, do we accept electronic copies afterwards? No, right? So I mean, I'm afraid that if you don't have that to submit into evidence right now, then we can't take that. That, that would be my understanding from the reg-
Yeah, it would have to be so.
Well, I think that what I'm asking for confirms the hardship that the lot, it's already an approved lot, and this request is only two feet in addition to the two feet that I have.
Your house is already, the house is already 50 foot long.
The house is under construction right now.
I mean, it's by no means, when you look at some structures, I mean, we look at some lot, smaller structures, we have a lot of houses that come through 20 foot wide and things like that, you know, so we, that's what we do, we give some small variances. But again, as this gentleman, this commissioner next to me had said, he had asked in your original plans, you probably should have made the house 48 feet instead of 50, and then you wouldn't, you wouldn't need the extra variance for, for a two-foot balcony.
All I'm asking is for the same opportunity that my neighbors already have. And many of these neighbors have projections that are closer to the street and further out than what I am asking for.
Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Mr. Sota?
See, we can clarify this. Did your original plans show a two-foot balcony or no balcony at all?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, did you buy the house after it was under construction, or did you plan, did you, you know, have the house designed for yourself?
When we drew up the plans, I was told that I need to go for a variance.
Okay, so at that time, you could have made the house two foot smaller, and you wouldn't have needed any variance. That's what they're trying to spell out to you. In other words, you didn't buy this house after it was framed, you were from the design up on it, right?
That's correct. And I'm coming to you for a two-foot variance at this point.
So you didn't think about that? So the original house had no balcony, and now you're trying to add one to it?
Unfortunately, had I known that, I would have drew it into the original plans and asked for a variance at that time, but I didn't.
She never, she never had one on the original house?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any questions further? No? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay. What do you think?
Either it was an afterthought, or whoever helped Mrs. Cohen design it, do the plans, should have known better and could have made the adjustment in that. Either way, I mean, it's a small add-on, and I don't, you know, I'm not going to necessarily fault her as an intentional thing, but surely could have been taken care of in a way that wouldn't have to come here.
The house has a patio in the back. It's an enormous house, and she built it, they, they built it brand-new from spec. So while it's a small variance, I, I'm having a problem rectifying, in my mind as a commissioner, to grant it. I don't, it's not, it was all right in front of them at that point in time. So we're going to make a variance request because of an error in, in judgment, we're supposed to be basing it on hardship of the lot. And she could have easily oriented the house, the builder, and her and her team could have easily oriented it correctly to accommodate that. Nor is it anyone's inalienable right to have a balcony. They don't need to have one either.
All I'm saying is, I'm like, sure, I'm saying it was her intent to dismiss the lead or this board and try to get, pull one over on us and get, get a balcony. You know, we all, you know, she may just, you know, I do fault maybe the person who wrote up the plans for her, should have known better.
I mean, the existing house is pretty close, I mean, it is pretty close to the street when I went down it. But then again, she did fit the house on the lot without-
But then again, she did fit the house on the lot without any other variances, so this would be the only one. I mean, two foot is very hard to put chairs on, but three foot's not, so, I mean, if she wants to. We have a motion? What do you guys feel about denying without prejudice and maybe come back with three feet?
There's no way you can deny it without prejudice, and the house is already built. She either has a four-foot balcony on the front or a two-foot balcony.
I will, I will make a motion to approve. I mean, there is a hardship with the land, and it is a small, non-conforming lot, and I do believe there's no intent on the person's part.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion.
Howard?
Yes.
Can you repeat?
Can you repeat?
I make motion to approve. There is a hardship with the lot. It is a small, undersized lot, and for the other reasons noted in the survey presented. And I don't believe there's any real intent on the person's part. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Soder?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
I'm against the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
I'm with the motion.
With the motion.
I'm against the motion. It fails.
Item number six, 62 Holly Avenue, Zone R5. Ken Prossino, owner, very, section 3-1-4-1, very west side yard setback to 1.8 feet, where four feet required. Rear yard setback to 0.03 feet, where five feet required. Seventy-one point eight percent lot coverage, where 65 percent required. Section 11.2 accessory building to 59 percent of house footprint, where 50 percent is required. MAP 71, Block 766, Parcel 4.
Hi, my name is Ken Prossino, 62 Holly Avenue in Milford, Connecticut. I'm here tonight to request a building, a two-car garage on my property. I have some pictures of my property in the back looking on the east and west. The first picture is looking to the east at 60 Holly Avenue. Shows my, our two cars with our shed. Just trying to show the placement of the garage would not be any further closer to the street than what my shed is right now. 60 Holly Avenue is actually closer to the road than what my garage would be proposed to be built at. The shed here also is pretty close to the fence, and my garage would be four feet from that side of the property line. The next picture shows looking west, and my neighbor at 64 Holly Avenue has just built that garage last year, had the same variance approval on the street side, what I'm asking for. And you can see that down this road here, many of the houses have the same issues I have with a non-conforming lot that's small, and the garages and houses are close to the The overall structure that I propose to build will fit with the neighborhood style and would also probably look very similar to my neighbor's house garage on 64 Holly Avenue. And those drawings have been also handed out.
Are you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're gonna be removing the shed. What's gonna be in that place? Just a patio kind of thing, or walkway?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I'll be removing the shed. From the fence is gonna stay. From the fence to my garage would be either pavers or asphalt driveway with a walkway to my backyard with a gate.
You have no driveway from the front. You use the rear road. That rear road, do you need permission from the borough to use that road?
No, I do not.
No? You don't? You're saying you're building even with the others?
It's actually gonna be not as far out as the house on 60 Holly Avenue. That's about another foot out into the roadway, so my garage would be in the same line as the garage built on 64 Holly, which is the second picture. So it'd be kinda in line where my shed is, if you're looking at the first picture. That's kinda in line where the garage would be built, which is in further than the house on 60 Holly Avenue.
Let's see here. The structure is 29 by 23, so it's fairly large. That's, to be quite honest with you, the only thing I have issue with is the size of the garage. And you did show us your neighbor's garage to the west. It's a nice structure. You're planning on being even with that? Do you know the size of that structure?
I believe that one was 23 by 23. He intended to have a two-car garage. It can only fit one car in there. So when I spoke to my neighbor, Mr. Thorpe, about it, and I asked him his recommendations, he said that he would build it wider as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Yeah, that's my concern. 29 feet, you don't need that for a two-car garage. 24 foot's plenty. I mean, you know, you get two nine-foot doors, and you still have two foot between each, the center and on each side. That's a standard two-car garage. 29 feet on this small lot is very large.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any more questions for this gentleman? You're opposed?
I have a question.
Okay, you can come forward. So you're either gonna be in favor of, or...
Well, I have a question for the board first. Jerry Fiorentino. I own the property at 60 Holly Avenue, and Ken's been a great neighbor. I don't have any problem, but I'm concerned about the drive, what the borough owns is a right-of-way, which is 20 feet wide, running behind all our properties. And when you look at the zoning, is that considered if it's a street, which it is? Both, we get traffic going both ways. Is that a front yard, or is that a rear yard? Or should this property have two front yards? That's my question.
I would say that's a rear yard, by any...
Even with a road?
Mr. Harris?
Well, it doesn't appear to be a road in the technical sense of the word. It's a passway.
Well, that's why one of the questions I had asked in the beginning is, the use of right-of-way of that...
It doesn't have a name like Main Street, for instance.
Well, it does now. It does have a name.
Is the name, it's Joseph?
Joe-Holt Way is the name of it. It's got a street sign and everything. I'm just curious about that, should that be more of a setback than just a rear yard setback? It's not just a fence between two people's backyards? So that was the question. Then the other issue I have is a safety issue, which is what happens when they plow? Where does the snow go? On what side? If there's no place to put the snow, where do you put it?
It looks like you're already up against it with the whole street, and his is the only inlet there. Maybe that's where the snow was going.
Well, I own the property on the other side of the right-of-way because it's part and parcel with the building I have at 60 Holly. It's the parking lot. And I'm just concerned that all the snow gets piled up against my garage, since I do have some space there. I'm not opposed to the project, but as somebody mentioned on the board...
You're half opposed.
I'm half opposed.
You do have questions, and your questions are valid, so...
And, you know, one person said, "Do you really need 29 feet instead of 20, what was it, 24 feet?" Just questions.
An oversized garage is considered, I think, 24 by 24 is a good oversized garage, but...
And if we reduce the size of the garage, then we would eliminate the west side yard setback potentially, and we could potentially eliminate the lot coverage variance as well by doing that. So I guess I would ask the appellant, I would ask him if he would be willing to shrink the size of the garage now.
I'll sit. Thank you.
Am I able to address the comments from, okay, all right.
Yes.
Two items in terms of the snow. You know, the square footage of the snow falling on that property will not change. Actually, it probably will get better by having a roof on it, so there'll be less snow to plow. And I have plowed my neighbor's driveway for him to help eliminate the snow. It's a tight area back there. You know, all neighbors are trying to work together at it, so I have helped out in the past of clearing the snow out of his driveways to make it better for everybody. And then the other question in terms of the right-of-way in the back, that street was just named, I think, last year as an honoree to one of our neighbors on that street for her husband who passed away. It was a Borough Woodmont honoree name. I don't think it was officially a street name, as Steve mentioned, that it was a City of Milford street. We don't want to call the street, because then people drive down there, and we have kids back there playing, and we want to keep the traffic down. So I would not call that the street. In terms of the size, I'm not sure if I'm able to request another dimension, but if the application would be denied where it's at now, I would request, you know, if I can go with a 27-foot wide garage and have my four-foot setbacks on each side, and keep it 27 by 23, I would really appreciate that. It's a small, non-conforming lot, 35 feet wide. You know, it's very difficult. At one time, I had five feet of property on the side of my house, and in a D 30, 40 years ago, that five feet went away. Not sure how it did. I've been living in Milford for eight years. Had that five feet on my property, that probably wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions?
So I just want to hear what dimensions you think you are now proposing.
If possible, I would appreciate requesting a 27-foot wide by 23-feet-deep garage.
So the 20... Mr. Harris, what would we have to do right now with this application if we're in favor of reducing the size of the garage?
Well, what you could do is you could deny without prejudice and leave it up to the applicant to present another plan that you may find favorable.
And how would we figure out the actual percentage lot coverage right now? Would you be able to figure that, or you wouldn't?
His surveyor can do that. Right now, it's at, the proposed lot coverage is 71.8 percent. There was an asterisk that there was a variance reported to increase the allowance to 70 percent underneath the zoning table on the survey.
And I believe, again, if we deny without prejudice, I don't think... Is there an application fee again? Yes, there is. Go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Let me ask you, you need 27 feet. Is there a set of stairs going upstairs? Is that why you need it wider?
Only on the inside. Yeah, I mean...
But so the stairs are on the inside, and that's...
It's for the attic. I'm probably using that just for storage space, you know, for all the stuff that, you know, get it off of the garage area and put it up in the attic.
I think there's one other thing that we didn't discuss either, and that's the last variance with the 59 percent of the house footprint versus 50 percent, which is required. So, and that's because this garage is so large as well, right? So I really think that the applicant needs to go back and think how they, he and his planning team can minimize the number of variances. I think a garage is a good idea there. I understand what he's trying to do, but I just think it looks excessive to me, and right now, it doesn't fit with our zoning regulations, and I'm concerned about it.
Any other questions? No? I believe I asked if there was any opposition, and there wasn't. Okay, so we're all set with this. Okay, this hearing's closed. Well, I think we're leaning deny without prejudice. Is that...
I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
I make the motion to give the applicant an opportunity to revisit the size and the number of variances that are being presented with his future application, to take into account the thoughts and the suggestions that we gave before him today.
We have a motion to deny without prejudice. We have a second. Mr. Soder?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Denied without prejudice.
Item number eight, item number seven, sorry. 151 Hillside Avenue, Zone R5, Robert Porter Potter, agent for Martha Goldman, owner, section 3-1-4-1, very west side yard setback to 3.1 feet, where five feet required. East side setback to 3.1 feet, where 10 feet required. MAP 49, Block 795, Parcel 80.
Mr. Lynch, he called out item number eight, so he almost skipped you again. And you jumped up just in time to be item number seven.
Well, I am here for number seven, right? All right. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trumbicki and Boynton. My office is located here in Milford at 63 Cherry Street, and I'm here tonight with my client, Robert Potter. Bob is the contract purchaser of the property at 151 Hillside Avenue, and we've given you a handout. I have most of the documents on the placard. But 151 Hillside Avenue presents itself as a very unique piece of property. It's probably one of the smallest building lots that I've seen over my years of making presentations to you, but it is a legal, non-conforming lot. It consists of some 1,838 square feet. It's a lot that was created on the 1902 Burwell Beach subdivision, and interestingly enough, Paul Stowell, who did do the plot plan for us, did have a locust map referenced at the top portion showing the other lots in the area. So you can see, really, that this is a much smaller lot than the other ones in close proximity. But on this property, for many years, constructed back in 1918, was a small beach cottage. It's been owned virtually for the last 60 years by Martha Goodman of New York. Ms. Goodman and her family have owned the property, had the cottage that was previously located there, and that cottage was destroyed through a combination of Irene and Sandy. And as you've driven by the property, you can see currently it's just a building lot. So the plans that have been put together by the architect and submitted with this application... application basically calls for a new house to be constructed centered in the middle of the lot. The prior house that was existing had roughly a two-foot setback on the side yard on one side and a 2.7-inch sideback setback on the other side. And the proposal that we've given to you is to construct a obviously narrow house that meets all of the front yard and the rear yard and the height requirements, the lot coverage and the building coverage. But we are, of course, seeking a variance of the side yard setbacks as required in the R5 zone. Again, as I mentioned, we've centered the new house in the middle of the lot. And the floor plans show the proposed house, and it's basically the same style house. And I'm not making any comments about aesthetics. Everybody has their own taste about construction and architecture. But I know in the past few years, the other house that was constructed at 162 Hillside Avenue did create some comments from folks in the neighborhood as to its appearance. But clearly, that's not a purview of this board. We're before you seeking the appropriate side yard variances to construct a house to basically replace what was there. As we know, in 2013, the amended zoning regulation came through to allow folks to reconstruct their existing houses that may have been destroyed by an act of God or through the hurricanes. This house, being 54 feet in length, is longer than the other cottage that was there, so that's what necessitated the application to you tonight. But clearly, it's within reason. It actually is a reduction in the nonconformity that was existing with the prior house. The floor plans show the layout, and obviously, the the new house will be constructed in accordance with the flood elevations as required. There'll be a carport on the lower level. The first-floor living area will consist of a an entryway, a kitchen with a bath and utility area, and a large living area and dining area to the back with a deck. And the second floor, similarly, will have an office with the master bedroom, bath, washer and dryer area, and again, a second-floor deck to the back. So with that said, I'm here to answer any questions. My client's here. Also, Mr. Bruckner, the architect, is here if there's any questions. But we submit that this is a reasonable request. The hardship obviously exists in the narrowness of the lot, but we couple that argument with the fact that we are, in fact, reducing the side yard nonconformity from what was previously there. And I know you've had a long evening, so I'll limit my comments to that and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch?
So the the existing lot's only 17 and 1/2 feet, huh?
Excuse me?
It's 17 and 1/2 feet, the lot width.
Roughly, yeah. Bill, we weren't all around in 1902 when that subdivision map was approved, so I, you know, we just have to go with what it is. It's definitely, I can't think of a smaller lot that I've ever dealt with before, but, you know, this, if you if you look at this proposed house and think of it as a one-bedroom condo almost, that's that's really what it is.
Mr. Harris, this is a legal, non-legal-
Yes, this is a legal, non-conforming lot. There's a lot of record. There's a map on file at the City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted a clarification on that. Any questions for Mr. Lynch? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application?
I believe there were two items submitted in opposition.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael H. Horrible. I'm a registered land surveyor with an office at 52 Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut. I'm here tonight representing Eleanor Jane Duplis. She has given me a letter of consent, which I'd like to turn in to the commission. My client, Eleanor Jane Duplis, formerly Eleanor Jane Molcic, is the trustee of the Eleanor Jane Molcic Revocable Family Trust 2005. That is the owner of lot number 153 Hillside Avenue. She is opposed to the variance applications before you for a number of reasons. I would like to read those reasons into the record. The construction of the proposed house within 3.1 feet of my property line will devalue my property and it will obstruct passage between the buildings for construction and emergency vehicles, block my views of Long Island Sound, and increase the potential for more damage to my house, interfere with the privacy of my lot, and result in increased noise levels on my property. The construction of a new building on the lot will constrict floodwaters over what is now a vacant lot and raise the potential for causing increased damage to my house and other adjacent properties. Three, the applicant proposes to construct a building within 3.1 feet of the property line. If allowed, the building would encroach into the easement I possess over a portion of the lot at number 151 Hillside Avenue. Furthermore, I have had the opportunity, I, Michael Horrible, have had the opportunity to look at and examine the survey that was submitted. And I think I believe there are some errors in it. The lot lines, and can I use his- The the plot plan shows it has an 18.57-foot frontage on Hillside Avenue. And it also shows that the two sidelines are converging as they go into Long Island Sound. So as the house, as you move back toward Long Island Sound from the street line, the lot gets narrower. The chart doesn't reflect that. The chart has 18.57 for the existing and for the existing lot width. It cannot be that because the lines are converging, okay? And we find- I'm sorry?
The survey shows that it's 17 and 1/2 feet wide at Long Island Sound and 18 and 1/2 feet at Hillside.
Okay. If you look at the chart that says the lot width, the lot width says 18.57 existing and proposed. The lot width, per your definitions, is to be a line parallel with the street line at the distance back, 14.1 feet. And when you calculate that, the distance turns out to be less than 18.57. So the chart is wrong there, number two, okay? He shows in the chart existing side yards. Where do they come from? Because you can't tell from the map that it was two feet or 2.7 or if it was 10 feet. I cannot tell.
So what are you saying the lot size is? What is it at Hillside and what are you saying it is at Long Island Sound?
They, the lot size varies because as you head toward Long Island Sound, the sidelines are converging.
Right. So what it, what are you saying the width is at Long Island Sound? He's got it down as 17 and 1/2 feet. Are you saying that's wrong?
I'm sorry, I can't hear very well.
They're showing 17 and 1/2-foot lot width at Long Island Sound and 18 and 1/2 feet at Hillside Avenue. So there's a one-foot difference, which would-
Yes.
Which would be correct to what you're saying.
Yes.
I just think the chart number is wrong.
The chart number-
The chart number is wrong, but the surveys, the lot lines are correct.
I don't have any judgment on the lot lines yet because we have not performed our survey, okay? But the chart is wrong. And also, the our, my client, the Molcic Trust, has a 3.32-foot-wide easement on their lot. And if they construct their house as shown, that their house will be constructed on portions, a small portion of our easement, thereby taking away the rights of Mrs. Duplis or the Molcic Trust. Furthermore, the plot plan does not show the easements as required, okay?
Excuse me, but wasn't the older, wasn't the the house that was torn down wider than this house?
I I don't know. I was never there before.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification. The survey shows the right-of-way for all purposes per volume 2422, page 351. It's shown on both sides of the house, so the survey is is showing rights of way on both sides of the house.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
He was saying that- Go ahead, Mr. Harris. Maybe you can say it to him again.
The survey is pointing out the the rights of way on either side of the house.
Okay, if that's how they indicate where the easements are, the 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 house, the front corner of the house, will still be projecting into the easement that my client has. They do not have the right to do that. There is another thing. There is a comment. Survey note number three, okay? It says the lands- I have to read my larger version. Survey note number three says, "The lands shown hereon were not abstracted by this office for easements, right-of-ways, ownership, or other instruments of record." Does that mean he's showing all the easements that go with the property? I don't believe so. And I know that it is required by the Code of Practice for land surveyors, okay, for a property survey. I believe that this property survey is defective in that it doesn't meet the requirements of a property survey as required by the State of Connecticut. Another question. In the application, in the application form, it was filled out, signed by the applicant, Robert Potter. As I understand it today, he is not the owner of the property. I believe I'm correct. So, and he also did not fill out that section that requires him to fill out what the hardship is. Do we know what the hardship is? And I question how a non-owner could have a hardship on property that he doesn't own.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll give me a second, let me pull the file. I believe there was a note.
Well, below that, it says, "Name of property owner, Martha Goldman," right on the application.
Yeah.
Owner of the property is Martha Goldman.
Oh, I know that.
Well, it says it right on the, right on the first page.
And the applicant is Robert Potter?
Correct.
Okay. Who's applying for the variance?
If I could interject, I have a document dated the 16th of September, notarized, signature by Martha Goldman. I, Martha Goldman, owner, owner of the parcel located at 151 Hillside Ave., hereby authorize prospective buyer, Robert Potter, to act as an agent in a request for variance to build a single-family structure on this lot. The purchase of lot at 151 Hillside Avenue, Milford, by Robert Potter is contingent upon getting approval from the Milford zoning board. So there is documentation authorizing a contingency of the sale. And there's also, I have the purchase agreement with financial information whited out as a, as a condition of submitting the application.
Okay. I guess my question is, does the contract purchaser have a hardship?
Well, a lot has a hardship. A contract purchaser or a person doesn't have a hardship. The hardship goes with the lot.
Another problem that we have is that my client didn't discover that there was a variance sought for this lot until she met with her architect, Leonard Hall, at the site. My client never received any mailed letter that there was going to be a variance. It was Mr. Hall who spotted the sign on the lot at the time. And since that time, which was last Wednesday, since that time, she has been checking her mail at Hillside Avenue daily, but has not received anything. Her name is on the list of names that he submitted to your office.
As part of the application processor, there's a printout of the assessor's list for budding properties. That has been incorporated into U.S. Postal Service forms 3655. When the applicant goes to do the notification, they go to the post office, and they have a stack of the envelopes, and they have this affidavit with the same addressing on it. The postal clerk will verify the the letters versus this form and stamp it as having been accurately mailed. So this is proof that the mail went out. Whether or not it was received, it was mailed in good faith.
And the date?
And the date.
Is October 2nd.
October the 2nd.
I see. I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer here, other than I believe my client in her statement that she never received any notification.
Regardless of whether the requirement is proof of submitting, you know, the the- you know, the, the envelope to the mail, to the post office. After that, the, the person really has no control over it. But there is, it was, it was duly notified per our requirement.
And it was placed at the site as well? Because I remember seeing the placard as well on the date that I noted it.
The placard, I have seen myself. There's no argument on the placard. It's the mailing, uh...
I believe we just explained that to you.
Pardon?
I said, "And I believe we just explained that."
Does your client, is this her residence, or does she just come here every now and then?
She presently lives in Seymour.
Well, that's why she didn't get the mailing probably. And that's why she didn't see the sign either?
Well, she saw the sign, but, and she saw it on Wednesday. Her mailing address, and she has a mailbox on Hillside Avenue, and she checks her mail, and she received nothing at home or on Hillside Avenue.
Well, they, they submitted the proof of mailing, and that's all they have to do.
Do you have anything else, sir?
Uh, no, not at the moment.
You're all set, sir? Are you all set? Okay. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Please come forward.
I'm Ronald Anderson, co-owner of the adjacent property, property at 147 Hillside Avenue. A little bit of history. The original house on this property was built in 1899. It's been in my wife's family since 1920. My wife has spent every summer there since she was a little girl. The house survived the hurricane of 1938. It was damaged in both Hurricane Irene and Superstorm Sandy. We used our own and insurance money to repair that damage. Midway during Sandy repairs, we were told that there was a spending limit for repairs and improvements, spending limit for repairs and improvements, and it was enforced by a draconian building permit process. We couldn't even put in a rug without a building permit. We had no choice but to demolish and rebuild, which we did. Using a large part of our own savings, we built a modest house that fits the lot and is aligned with other beachfront houses, front and back. The current zoning appeal makes no allowance... Now, here's, here's the gist of my, my problems. The zoning appeal makes no allowance for damage mitigation to our house. The only mitigation comments on the drawings there are for a silt fence. Our concerns include grade beam damage to our house during excavation. And I might point out that cave-ins during a new house excavation down the street rendered the neighbor's driveway unusable for many months. FEMA required that a cement slab under our house have no steel reinforcing. This makes it extremely fragile, by design, apparently. To make the house insurable, our insurance agent recommended storm guard windows at a cost of $38,000. Window breakage during construction would cause significant interior damage. And this is a brand-new house. Like the house on our other side, we have not enclosed, the underside, like the house on the other side of us, we have not enclosed the underside of the house. Does the builder propose to use this as a construction shed? Our stamped concrete driveway will be destroyed if heavy equipment is maneuvered on it. I believe that this appeal is incomplete because it should require a complete plan for damage mitigation and perhaps, or certainly, something like $250,000 insurance policy for damage to the surrounding house. Remember, this lot is very, very narrow. I don't see how they can bring in heavy equipment. There's power lines on that side of the street. How are they gonna bring in even a, a cement pumper to put in the piers? That's all I have to say.
A few questions for you, sir.
Excuse me, sir, I have one question for you. So your house was built before this house was demoed?
Our house was built...
Before this...
Excuse me, I don't understand the question.
Okay. What, was your house, when was your house complete? Was...
Our house, we got the CEO for our house last December.
Okay. Was this house on this lot in question, was it demoed before your house was built?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in opposition? No one else? Okay, Mr. Lynch.
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, the first speaker, the gentleman who identified himself as a licensed surveyor and said that our survey didn't meet standards. He certainly didn't cite any regulations or any state standards that my surveyor didn't meet. This is a stamped A2 survey from Paul Stowell. He appears with applicants all the time and prepares surveys submitted to both this board and the planning and zoning board. So I submit that, obviously, the standards have been met. The survey also showed that there was an easement on the one side, a right-of-way, beach, rights-of-way throughout the Hillside, Burwell Beach areas are, are common. It's noted on the map. But more importantly, this house is going to be narrower than the prior house so that whatever rights of passage that existed certainly will not be infringed by a narrower house. It's just common sense. We noted for the record a hardship, so I think that that is not a relevant fact. And also, any questions about the mailing and the notices? Meg put in the record, the, the standards that our zoning regulations call for have been met. There's also case law that says that if someone shows up at a public hearing, either themselves or with an agent, that in and of itself is evidence of constructive notice. So by the mere fact that this woman's agent showed up here tonight, basically moots that point as any consideration. And lastly, we're not seeking any rear yard or front yard setbacks. The house as designed lies within the required setbacks. And the last speaker, the gentleman who spoke about infringement on his air rights or views, I ask you to, again, reference the map. This house is literally a foot further towards Long Island Sound than his house. And again, it's well within the setbacks. So I think that that covers all the comments that the, the two gentlemen made. I'd ask that you approve this, this application. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? None?
Yes, sir.
For the record, Michael H. Horvath...
I'm not gonna let you dispute anything he just said because he had, he had the last right to speak, so... I'm not gonna let you dispute anything that he had just said.
Okay.
Okay, this hearing's closed. Your thoughts, gentlemen?
Well, I mean, I don't think they could've done a better job for this size lot and, you know. It's centered nice, looks good. I think they did everything right.
It's less non-conforming. Meets the front and back setbacks, so you can't get them on the, the lit, and they're not going, you know, they're encroaching any farther, so... I can't say we can't approve it.
Okay, we need a motion.
Make a mo, a motion to approve?
Second.
Reason for approval is the narrowness and the undersized lot, and a few other reasons noted in the survey provided.
A motion to approve, we have a second on the motion. Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Fazino?
With the motion.
Mr. Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion.
It's approved.
Item number eight, 306 High Street, Zone R125, goes to Cubic, ex-attorney for Brian Skinner, owner, Section 11.2, vary other terms, building accessory to make construction, to permit construction of a 768-square-foot two-car garage when principal building is 1,280 square feet. Map 65, Block 310, Parcel 7.
Good evening. My name is Joe Cubic. I'm a lawyer with Harlow Adams &amp; Friedman. And our law offices are located at One Nahaven Avenue here in Milford. And it looks, looks like Brian and I have you all to ourselves. And I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. This is Brian's applica, Brian Skinner's application for the property at 306 High Street, seeking a variance as to the size of a garage. And I'll submit the certificates of mailing. The application seeks to vary Section 11.2 of the zoning regulations. And this is, it's an unusual regulation. It's, it's contained actually in the definitions, and we already heard of 11.2 tonight. And it requires that no, that a, that an accessory building be no more than 50 percent, have the footprint of no more than 50 percent of the primary building on the property, in this case, the propos, the house that's currently under construction. We have letters of support for the application from the two neighbors abutting on, on either side of the property. And one is 302 High Street, the other is 314 High Street. And I'll submit those letters. I've got, I think, five each. One is from Ken Polisi, Kevin Polisi, who lives at 302 High Street, and Tristan Baker, who owns and lives at 314 High Street. And they've explained, in both letters are very similar. And I'll read, I'll just read one and paraphrase it. "The owners of 306 High Street is seeking approval to permit construction of a new, of a two-car garage that is 768 square feet, when the footprint of the principal, where the footprint of the principal building is 1,280 square feet. They recognize that the zoning regulations prohibit anything over 50 percent. But as owners of the adjacent properties, they are both signing, providing support for the applications and acknowledging that they're both, those are the two properties that are most significantly affected by this application." So I'm gonna submit five sets, five copies of each of the letters. The, the other property owner that's abutting is the property to the rear, and that's Milford Apartments LLC. That property is a large apartment comp, building complex. There's two large buildings with apartments. That's owned by Milford Apartments LLC, which is owned by the Spriglio family, which, who actually own Lord Chamberlain Nursing Home, but they live in Stratford, Connecticut. And I haven't heard any response from them. The history of the property is that, that this 306 High Street used to be a larger parcel. It used to consist of 306 and what's now 302 High Street. And your, your, yours, the surveys that were submitted show the property being split off. Roland Skinner, Brian's dad, acquired the property. In the process of acquiring the property, had my former law partner, George Adams, seek variances and then subdivision approval to split the property in half. So 302 and 306 are separate parcels, legal, legal parcels. That was back in, four years ago. And subsequent to that, Brian decided to buy 30, 306 High Street and, and resided there. 30 High, 306 High Street was built in 1928. And in the course of Brian living in that house for about three years, realized there's no insulation. The windows are, are antique. The kitchens are outdated. There's only one ba, the kitchen's outdated, the bathroom's outdated, and there's only one. And they decided, they made a decision that it made sense to build a new house, that renovating was gonna cost a lot of money, and building the new house seemed to be the, probably the best way to go. And indeed, a, a building permit's been pulled, and the house is currently under construction. And Brian's dad, Roland Skinner, is building the property. And the goal was to build a house that was similar in nature and size to the house that had always been there, so as not to disrupt the neighborhood. And if you look at the survey, you'll see that what was there in... You'll see on the survey that the top drawing, the drawing farthest to the left, shows the two lots, 302 and 306. And you'll see a dotted footprint that shows what was the house. And if you look over to the proposed site plan and the house that's proposed, it's almost essentially in the same position, same angle to the street, same width, essentially, almost identical footprint. It was done per plan so that there wouldn't be a disruption to the neighborhood. What the surveys also show are the properties surrounding 306 and 302 High Street. 314 High Street, Mr. Baker's property, the house is up above. And then you'll see what I've highlighted in, in blue are the two outbuildings that are on 3, 314 High Street that are very proximally, proximally, very close to Brian Skinner's property. You'll see what's in red is the apartment building. That apartment building is off 15 feet from the rare, rare yard, rare, the, the rare boundary of a Brian's property and extends all the way across. It's a two-foot, two-story apartment building. And I know you've all probably been to the property and seen it. I've got photographs to submit. But what we're trying to do is put, what's gonna be put, the house that's gonna be put there is very similar to what was there. And what happens is that footprint, by necessity, by trying to keep the property at a similar size and similar character, means it's a smaller house. And by, by design. And what Brian seeks is to put in that house, but also a garage that's a little larger. I'm gonna submit the photographs. First are the aerial photographs. And I've only made, only, only have a couple sets. There's not too much of a surprise there. But the point of the aerial photographs is to show the, the proximity of the, the brick, the huge apartment building that's right at the rear of his property. So I'm gonna submit two sets, one color, one black and white. And the aerial photographs are den, 306 High Street. This is an old photograph. This is before Brian's dad built the house at 302 High Street. But you, you'll see where 306, the, the old 306 was located on the property. You'll see the proximity, and that, that bullseye target on, on the aerial photograph showing 306. And you'll see actually, the old house that was torn down actually had a garage off to the side, on the side property line of 314 High Street. But the, it's clear where those large apartment buildings are in proximity to 306 High Street. They're, they're enormous for, for that neighborhood. The, the buildings are in a resident, residential, commercial zone, office zone. So they are legally there, of course, but for that neighborhood, completely out of character. And unfortunately, Brian's property and his neighbor at 302 High Street do bear a brunt of that building. Other photographs I have show the property at different angles. One set, set... One set... Set one shows property... there's an excavation machine on the property. It's under construction, the new house. But one photograph shows... one set of photographs shows the brick wall from a distance out back where the house... up front where the house will be. Another set of photographs, number two, shows the brick wall, various locations, but the subject brick walls and the windows that are of great concern to Brian, and we'll discuss that in a little bit. The third set of photographs show the outline... sort of the property... property line of 314 and the outbuildings that are characteristic of this neighborhood. And I'll submit these. These are three sets of photographs showing the rear of 306 High Street. What Brian's requesting to build is a garage that's 24 feet by 32 feet. It is a use that's printed in the zone, there's no question about that. The plans of the garage have been submitted, but I'll flip those for you now. I believe in your... in your packet, the information you received, you should have the drawings, but I'll submit some more copies of the drawings of just the front of the garage. And what's proposed is a two-car garage with maybe some storage space up above, but it's certainly not living space, given the height of it, window and a door to keep it attractive. And that's it. There's nothing more to this. And... well, it's really that simple. It's... the issue is that it's an oversized garage. And just to give an idea of how the size difference... where my finger is and over is what would be legally allowed as of right. There's a five... five feet and a third extra... extra size of the garage that we're looking for, and there's a really good reason for that. We're looking for an extra-sized garage to provide screening for that apartment building. And the photographs show a number of windows that are right directly looking into Brian's And it's an interesting reg that we're seeking to vary. Literally, if Brian was building a bigger house, he wouldn't need to come here and ask for a variance for a bigger garage. So I don't think the intent was that you need to have a big house to have a big garage in Milford. But I think the intent was for the... for the regulation is that they don't want... certainly the city doesn't want overbuilding on properties. And so even though we think it's somewhat ironic that maybe you have to be rich to have a big garage, that's not... that's not the reason why it's there. This board is supposed to look at these things on a case-to-case basis and see what's reasonable for the neighborhood. And we believe that this clearly is a reasonable request. Brian could build a larger house, but it wouldn't be similar to what was there, and it wouldn't be in character with the neighborhood. It might be a bigger jolt to the neighborhood than Brian wants to create. Brian could also build an attached garage, which could be larger, but that would defeat the whole screening of the apartments issue and would not be... would not achieve that purpose. So what Brian's requesting is permission to build a garage that's about 20 percent larger than what he is as of right entitled to, and as I said, about five and a third feet wider than he is as of right entitled to. It's actually about half the size of a parking space. The garage will allow space for two cars and act as the shed, you know, storage of lawn mowers, snow blowers, lawn furniture, bikes, whatever, but that's what that other location would be. He doesn't need an outbuilding or a separate shed where one of those ugly metal things from Lowe's. It'll all be contained in this one... one property. But at the same time, it's gonna effectively screen the apartment building. And it's not just Brian not having to look at that ugly building, and if you look at the photographs and the broken windows that I have still to submit, it's not just that, but it's also the people in those buildings looking at him. There is absolutely no privacy back there. And one of the best stories I can give you is a few years ago... well, I guess it was during the big blizzard, Brian and his two sisters were shoveling out the driveway and working all day, and about a couple days later... a couple days later, some person, an older gentleman from that building walked around to give Brian photographs of him and his sister shoveling the snow. Kind of creepy. So what we're thinking is that the privacy aspect of it is, it goes both ways. He doesn't have to see that, they don't see him. But with the variance we requested, and the reason we requested the size and where it's located, is that effectively we are eliminating the views both ways from those windows. And if I take my ruler, and it's about the same width as the width of that garage, and extend it out from the property line, I'm gonna show you the screening, how effective it is. Essentially, between those two pink lines is completely shielded from that building. And then at different angles, at different locations of the windows, it's entirely shielded. Now, the reason it would be entirely shielded is some of those... some of those photographs are gonna show that that building, that apartment building, is at a lower elevation than Brian's building. And so the effect of shielding will be almost absolute with just this location of this building. And if you look at the location of the windows on the brick buildings and the location of the proposed garage, it's pretty... it's a significant shielding, not... probably not complete, but significant enough to give that privacy in that backyard and prevent whoever lives there from using those windows as a vantage point to Brian's backyard. Now, I know the board knows it's the powers that you... that the ZBA has here. You have the power to vary the zoning regulations, but you must do so and vary the regs to keep in harmony the purpose and intent of the regulations. But you need to take into due concern public health, safety, convenience, welfare, and property values. And it probably hit on public health, welfare, safety, and in effect, property values, just in that little example of the views, the privacy that we're asking to obtain in light of the fact that we have a small house. You know, you may... I know the board is aware that you must consider conditions especially affecting a specific property. There's few properties in this city that have that kind of a brick wall right on the back property line, 15 feet off the property line, with that type of use, which is an apartment use. It's clearly not gonna... the regulation... the variance we're seeking isn't gonna affect the general district, and we believe that the literal enforcement of this regulation for this property really doesn't achieve anything. In a sense, not granting the variance, we believe would result in an exceptional difficulty, unusual hardship. Hardship is in part one, the unusual nature of the building with that big, big, big brick wall in the back of the property, and the fact that the regulation almost requires a bigger house to have a bigger garage. Well, that's not the intent. The intent is to print overbuilding, reasonable use of property, and we believe that this variance, it's essentially 128 feet extra in size, is the reason... is a reasonable use that would provide for the granting of a variance. And we believe it won't negatively affect anybody in the neighborhood, and certainly not the abutting neighbors. So I've tried to put out a lot quickly to let us all go home. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Are you telling me that the position of where you're putting that is a better screening than putting a garage, which you could make a much bigger size than you're proposing there, attached to the house? Why wouldn't having one attached to the house do everything that you're asking for? Block all the views and everything? I'm not a geometry major, but you're just talking about not having to see that and not having them be able to see into you. So if you have the garage with a blank back up against the back of your house, wouldn't that cause the same thing?
I don't... I don't see how it could. It wouldn't be a shield for the backyard. It would... wherever... depending upon how...
You're trying to shield the backyard, is what you're saying. You're not trying to... But I mean, I guess my comments are more for discussion, but I mean, I'm not in love with this application, to be honest with you, but you only have to get four out of the five.
Yeah.
My concern here is that the hardship... I don't see a hardship. I see you trying to maximize your value for this property. That's what I see, because you know that you can get more money to sell this if you have... get rid of that view, so...
I could get... well, Brian... this is Brian... Brian intends to live there. He's here right now, if you'd like to question him on that, but yeah, I'd get more money if I built a bigger house, I think. He doesn't wanna build a bigger house. So it's not money that's...
Well, what about the next person that comes here that buys that house? This is gonna be there, we're gonna grant that variance, and it's gonna be there forever, and then a new person can come in and they can expand that house if they wanted to.
Well, they could, and then suddenly the variance wouldn't have been necessary because the footprint of the house, the principal residence, will be larger, so they could have a larger garage as of right.
Okay. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Privacy isn't a hardship, so you can... you can plant flowers, trees, wherever you want to hide the thing. But I will make a comment about the applicant keeping the size of the house in conformity with the rest of the houses in that neighborhood, and the fact that he could build a larger house and therefore have a bigger garage. You know, I... I think that's great, but there is no hardship for privacy.
Well, I'm not disagreeing, but in the application of the regulation as to the size of the house, it doesn't seem to really... the literal... the literal application, the literal strict letter law as to this property, we don't think is...
I get it. He's being penalized because he's trying to keep a house in conformity with the rest of the neighborhood by keeping it as small as rest of the neighborhood, and therefore he's being penalized because he can't have the garage that he wants.
Right. It's creating an exceptional...
I get that, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any more questions, gentlemen? Last call? Nope? Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Comments? Mr. Sodha, looks like you have a comment.
Well, I don't have... I don't have a problem with it, because he could've built a bigger house. He's not asking for an oversized garage for the size of the lot. He's meeting all the setbacks on the garage. And nobody's opposed to it. You got neighbors that are in favor of it, so, you know. I don't see it as a problem, because I wouldn't... I wouldn't wanna spend the kind of money he's spending for a new house and look at those con... look at those bricks, so...
There's the statement right there, though. It goes back to financial. There's the statement. And I'm just saying, maybe I'm not popular tonight, but I don't see a hardship with the lot, and I'm not here to be popular. Although I do like you guys.
I would hate for him to come back with a proposal of a bigger house, therefore he has the bigger garage. And so that's the... that's the conundrum there. That's the problem, okay? So for me, I'm willing to give him the five feet on the garage in order to keep the integrity of the... of the house, of the size of the house with the rest of the houses on the neighborhood.
I mean, hey, he could build a garage two foot smaller than... can you put a shed right next to a garage, Stephen?
All accessory buildings, either singular or combined, can only be at 50 percent of the footprint of the house.
Well, we're looking for percentages, one building versus the other, and I really can't... He's got plans to build a certain size house. It's like we can't force him into building a bigger house just so it conforms, so the garage will fit in, so... To be quite honest with you, looking at the pictures and the property and the surroundings that he has there, I really... I don't have a problem with it.
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
A reason for approval is that he... the reason he needs the variance is because he's choosing not to build a larger house, which he'd be entitled to build, and keeping it in conformity... the size of the house, it's conformity to the rest of the neighborhood.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois?
I'm with the motion.
Haberman?
With the motion.
Mr. Sodha?
With the motion.
Mr. Vazino?
I am against the motion, but it's nothing personal. I'm with the motion. Passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business? Good grief, we have to help this reporter here pretty soon. Old business?
Just that 990 Nagatuck, it's going to be appealed, the decision.
Oh, it's gonna be appealed, but it's out of here. It's going to court.
It's going to court.
Let the court decide, okay. New business? Any new business? Any staff updates? Acceptance of the... says August here, but we're... September? September? September 2015. Approval on the minutes?
I read them, Mr. Chairman. They look fine.
Applications for next month?
I can't think of anything. I'm not sure.
There's one already for residential. They didn't get the drawing in on time.
Motion to adjourn? Do adjourn? Second meeting is adjourned.